Good evening, everybody. We're ready to begin. We do apologize for the inconvenience with some technical difficulties. City of Las Vegas Planning Commission meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Boyne's?
Present.
Vice Chair Trobridge?
Present.
Commissioner Truesdale?
Present.
Commissioner Evans?
Present.
Commissioner Simon?
Present.
Commissioner Quinn?
Here.
Commissioner Ellsworth?
Present.
We have everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. President, after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being presented live on KCLV Channel 2. The Planning Commission meetings, as well as other KCLV programming, can be viewed on the Internet at www.kclv.tv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2 and the web Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m., and the following Thursday at 6:00 p.m. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 23 Planning Commission meeting?
Move for approval as presented.
Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote. Post. And that motion has passed. Housekeeping?
Chairman's staff at this time has no housekeeping items.
Thank you. We'll move on to our one motion, one, excuse me. Yes, sir.
I'd like to obey my item.
Okay, name and address for the record, please.
1611 West Bonanza, representing the applicant. And its items number 15, 16, 17, and 18, and I'd like to move to the January 22 meeting.
Staff, could we accommodate our request?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion on obeying items 15 through 18 to the December...
January 22.
To the January 22 Planning Commission meeting.
Make a motion to obey items 16, 17, 18 as requested.
Motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Post. And that motion has passed. Moving on to our one motion, one vote items. The following items are may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearing and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person represented in an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Item 1, ANX 30397, applicant owner Daniel Shannon, petition to annex property located on the south side of Florine Avenue, 340 feet west of North Cimarron Road alignment, containing approximately 1.08 acres. Item 7, RQR 29711, applicant owner TJP Nevada, limited partnership for a 40-foot tall, 14-by-48-foot off-premise signed billboard at 2101 South Decatur Boulevard. Item 8, MSP 30236, applicant owner Montecito Partners LLC for a commercial development at 6605 Grand Montecito Parkway. Item 9, RQR 30328, applicant owner DSL Inc. for a 40-foot tall, 14-by-48-foot off-premise signed billboard at 1205 East Sahara. Item 10, RQR 30332, applicant owner Milford Mark and Laura Lynn Trust for a 40-foot high...
Excuse me, Chairman. We've lost the recording.
We will, we will hold a meeting at this time for a technical difficulty. Thank you very much. Well, we left off on item 10 on the one motion, one vote. Well, go ahead and read that in and we'll continue from there. Item 10, RQR 332, applicant owner Milford Mark and Laura Lynn Trust for a 40-foot high, 14-by-48-foot off-premise signed billboard at 1615 North Decatur. Item 11, RQR 30358, applicant owner Teddy Enterprises and Associates for a 50-foot tall, 14-by-48-foot off-premise signed billboard at 3421 West Sahara. Item 12, RQR 30360, applicant owner GP Ivanhold Second Inc. for a 51-foot high, 14-by-48-foot off-premise signed billboard at 4300 Meadows Lane. Those are the one motion, one motion, one vote items. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Staff would like to pull items number 7 and 10 from the one motion, one vote.
So item 7 and 10 have requested to be pulled. These are public hearing items. If anybody in the audience would like to speak for or against these items, please come forward. Mr. Farlow?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. On items number 7, 9, 10, 11, and 12, are they keeping those nice?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more comments, I'll entertain a motion on one motion, one vote. Items 6, 8, 9, 11, and 12.
Make a motion for approval for 6, 8, 9, 11, and 12. Subject to all staff conditions.
Motion's...
Motion for approval.
Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote. Post.
Those items were approved. Item 6 will go forward to council and ordinance form. Items 9, 11, and 12 go to city council on October 7, uh, December 17. And item 8 is final action.
Thank you. Moving on to our public hearing items. Oh, pardon me. Let's pull item 7. Sorry. RQR 29711. Staff?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this item was previously held from the October 23 Planning Commission meeting for staff to further pursue contacting the applicant. Since that time, staff has discovered no new points of contact. The original letter mailed to the applicant has not been returned, nor has any communication been received in the past 90 days. Subject sign is moderately good and good condition as finalized permits. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of this required review. Staff would also like to add the following condition as submitted to the clerk. Payment of the required fees totaling $800, $300 application fee, and $500 notification fee within 10 days of the city council. Please note additional letters of protest have been received. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience would like to speak for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments from the board on item 7? No comments? We'll entertain a motion.
Seeing no comments regarding item number 7, I make the motion for approval. Subject to all staff conditions with the addition of the condition as written in the record by staff.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 7. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
Goes forward to council on December 17.
Item 10, RQR 30332. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, there have been no significant changes in the surrounding land use since the installation of the sign in 2005. The sign is in good condition with the exception of minor pigeon problem and has received a final inspection from the Department of Building and Safety. Staff is recommending approval of this application with an additional condition included for the provision of pigeon abatement measures. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience want to speak for or against item 10, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board? If not, a motion on item 10.
Regarding item number 10, I make a motion for approval. Subject to all staff conditions with the addition of the additional condition that the staff just read into the record.
Motion on the floor for approval. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
Goes forward to council December 17.
That concludes all of our one motion, one vote. We'll move on to our public hearing items. Items 13 and 14 are related. Item 13, GPA 29875, applicant owner Pentecostal Temple Church of God in Christ from M Medium Density Residential to PF Public Facilities at 618 Jefferson Avenue. Item 14, ZON 29876, from R3 Medium Denser Residential to CV Civic at 618 and 618 through 621 Jefferson Avenue and 621 Madison Avenue. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed public facilities general plan designation is compatible with the existing and future residential and civic development in the surrounding area. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the general plan amendment and subsequent rezoning application. Please note that additional letters of support have been received. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant?
Good evening. Susan Johnston with Stanley Consultants, representing the property owners. We accept staff conditions and ask for your support.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. If anybody in the audience would like to speak for or against item 13 or 14, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the board?
Seeing none, I make the motion regarding item number 13. General Plan Amendment 29875, make a recommendation for approval. Subject to all staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 13. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
Goes forward to council December 17.
Item 14?
In regards to zoning 29876, make a recommendation for approval. Subject to all staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 14. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
Council December 17.
Thank you.
Thank you. Items 19, 20, 21, and 22 are all related. Item 19, ZON 29661, applicant pageantry homes owner Rancho Park Residential LLC from CM Commercial Industrial under resolution of intent to RPD 16 residential plan development, 16 units per acre, to RPD 20 residential plan development, 20 units per acre at the northwest corner of Rancho Drive and Smoke Ranch Road. Item 20 is a variance, VAR 29663, to allow 1,185 parking spaces where 1,231 parking spaces are required. Item 21, VAR 29958, to allow 361,548 square feet of open space in a residential plan development district where 469,577 square feet is required. Item 22, SDR 29658, for a proposed two- and three-story multifamily development consisting of 350 condominium units and 304 apartment units. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, in regards to the zoning, per Title 19.06, concurrently, for an RPD, the zoning is submitted concurrently with the submission of a site plan review. As such, staff finds the two related variances to be self-imposed hardships and are self-generated in nature and therefore recommends denial as there's no finding of hardship in this case for both variances. As such, the site plan itself cannot function and staff recommends denial of the site plan and the variance.
Thank you. Applicant?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Tony Celeste. Along with me is Chris Kemfer. Our office is located at 3800 Howard Hughes Parkway, and we're here on behalf of the applicant. What we have before you is a project that's located or bounded by Rancho, Smoke Ranch, and Decatur. And what I'm bringing before you is somewhat of a unique project in that it's a combination of a for-rental product in apartments as well as a for-sale product with the condominium. As a result, I think it's important that I give you just a little background about our client. Rancho Park Residential is formed between pageantry homes, which I think many of you are familiar with, is one of the premier home builders, not only in southern Nevada, but was recognized last year as a top 100 builder nationally. They have done several condominium projects, including some in the city. One just recently approved and constructed up in the town center area that was approved at about 17 and built out of about 17 dwelling units per acre. Along with pageantry homes is Kevin McCarthy's consulting company. Kevin McCarthy was formerly with Juliet Properties, who we also know is one of the premier apartment developers in town as well. Mr. McCarthy brings the apartment experience. He's been involved with the pre-development, construction, and leasing of apartments for at least 15 years, been involved with dozens of complexes and nearly 3,500 units throughout the valley. So that's just a little background going into this project before I delve too much into it. That is also really the primary reason why we're coming before you with this new site development plan as well as the rezoning. This project was recent, was approved in March of 2006 as a condo use at a density of 16 units per acre. The client is now coming back, repositioning itself with the ever-changing market, and finds that this new hybrid between the for-rent apartments and now the for-sale condo is a better fit. Therefore, requesting a slight increase in zoning by just over three units to the acre at about 19.4. Like to mention that this area is master planned or the general plan is 25 and a half units to the acre. So we're well within what is, what's the city's own plan designates this parcel. Additionally, we've made several changes prior to getting to this point. We've worked very hard with your staff and have received other input so that we could substantially increase our open space. When we first came in filing for this project, we only had about eight acres of open space when nearly 11 was required. As a result of working with your staff as well as receiving some other comments back, we've been able to get our open space up to just under 10 acres. We're about 3/4 of an acre short. Specifically, I'd like to draw your attention to the middle pod here. This is the pod that we worked extensively on to increase open space. I don't know if it's in your backup anymore, but initially, this pod was void of really any usable open space, any amenities or anything like that. We substantially increased the open space there to add a pool, usable open space. We've also called out some of the amenities that we're going to be providing with the plan. Also, the other variance associated with this is a reduction in parking. We're about just over 3% short from what the code requires, which works out to about 40 spaces. Like to point out that we're bound on three sides by three major fairways. Rancho, which serves as a freeway, Smoke Ranch on the south, and then Decatur along our western boundary line. As you can see from the site plan, we have bus stops on every side of our property. We're in close proximity to major employment centers such as downtown Las Vegas Strip, just across the street from the Fiesta and Texas stations. So we come before you with, I think, a vast improvement from where we started, and we respectfully request your approval tonight. I do have a couple of comments that I would like to make about the condition, if approved, the conditions, if, if this is the appropriate time, or I can wait and... okay. It's specifically having to do with the site development review. And if I could just point your attention to condition number 7. It currently states, "The minimum distance between buildings shall be 20 feet." What we'd like to add is that the minimum distance shall be 20 feet for the apartment use and 9 feet for the condo use. And that's how our plan currently is shown. So we just request that, that minor change to, for that. As far as condition number 12, I think Doug, I may need your help on crafting this one, but what we're planning on doing is phasing this. So what we're going to probably have to do is come in with a landscape phasing, technical phasing plan. And hopefully, it would be based off, our certificate of occupancy can be based off completion of that phase instead of how it currently reads. The certificate of occupancy will not be issued or the final inspection will not be improved until the landscape inspections have been completed. Because we're going to be phasing it, we'd like to somehow break that up so that we're not required to come in and do all the landscaping when this project is going to be phased. And finally, I think it's just more of a clarification that we want to put on the record. It's condition number 26. Just want to clarify that that condition speaks directly to our condo use and not the apartment use. It's, with respect to the homeowners association, shall be established, and we are agreeing to that, but that, that is for the condo use and separate and apart from the apartment use.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. If anybody in the audience want to speak for or against this item? Item 19 through 22, please come forward.
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. On the open space, they're requesting a 25, about a 25% reduction in that. I understand that, that open, that they can get away with, with less open space if it's a quality setup. And I want to know if staff has looked this over and if they agree that this is, if, if this is really a quality open space that they're presenting. The second thing is that in the condo unit, there says that the distance between buildings was going from 20 feet to 9 feet. That's a, that's an awful big reduction. I, I hope that somebody looks at that and see if that works out too. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to comment on the items 19 through 22? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. I'll defer to staff. Is that quality open space?
In regards to the request for the variance of open space, staff, staff finds that the request is a minimum amount of open space to be provided. The applicant does not meet the minimum open space and is recommending denial. As to the areas that are open space, portions of the, between the building have been counted as open space, and staff finds that is not creative or functional open space in, in its sense of the term, and is recommending denial.
Thank you.
If I may just add a comment with regards to...
Please do.
Just real quickly, I believe what the resident was speaking about, about the 25% reduction is probably when we first filed. I don't know if that was the notice. That would probably be accurate, that we were about 25% short. Since we've, we've submitted revised plans to planning probably a month, a month, a month ago or if not more, to where we've actually substantially increased that open space, and now our reduction is about 4%, 3 to 4% versus 25%. So I do want to make that, that clarification. Second point was about the distance between, you know, 20 feet for apartment use, and now we're asking for 9 feet for condo. Well, it's always been 9 feet from the plans we submitted. It's just something that we needed to point out and clarify for the record. And finally, with respect to, is this a quality development? It absolutely is. Base rent for the apartment use is going to be about $850 per, per month, up to about 12 or 1,250 for the larger two- and three-bedroom apartment uses.
Thank you. Go ahead and close the public hearing. Any, I want to take some comments and questions from the board, but I want to... This development's been back before us several times, so we're pretty familiar with it. Again, I'd like to focus on both the variances here if, if we could, because if we get into the, to the other matters, we'll be here all night. So with that, any comments or questions from the board?
I have a...
Commissioner Evans?
Question, please. Is part of the objection to parts of the application primarily based on the rental aspect of the proposal? I'm curious.
Do you?
Part of the, part of the proposal is a rental product. Is that, I'm assuming, I know there was a neighborhood meeting. Was that one of the issues that was discussed? Was the rental properties versus for-sale?
I can, yeah, I can absolutely address that question for you, Commissioner Evans. We did in fact, and I failed to mention this in my presentation, we did in fact have a neighborhood meeting this past Monday. There was only one neighbor in attendance. He was just more inquisitive, had questions. We provided him with information. He didn't seem to indicate one way or another with regards to what he thought about the project. It was just more inquisitive, and there was only one, one neighbor at the meeting, neighborhood meeting we held at Brindley Middle School.
Thank you. And, and you mentioned the reduction in open space. It's, is our agenda correct in that, I, I'm assuming you revised your application with a more recent submittal with the site plan, but it calls for, to allow 361,500 and some feet of open space in the residential plan development where 4,006, or 4,69577 is required. Are those the accurate numbers?
We, we are at about 9.8 or 9.9 acres of total open space in the site, which I believe the requirement under the code is about 10.7 or so.
So you're...
We've...
Would it be fair to say that you're substantially complying with the spirit of the open space?
I believe we are.
If I may, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, refer to page 8 of the staff report. The actual numbers are 426,880 square feet where 4,66963 is required. And the staff report shows that that is a provision of 29% of the open space where 32% of the site is required.
Thank you.
Mr. Quinn? Mr. Simon? Mr. Trobridge? Truesdale?
Yes, I, I think we have a project here that's been before several times, and, and we, each time we've made comments in the proposer or the project has gone back and, and made modifications of the plan. They've held, held the public hearings with nobody really showing up to show a lot of concern or voice objections to it. You know, there's a lot of things going for the project that I think we can't lose track of, you know, that it's being built by one of the, the top builders in the U.S. I think that goes to speak to the quality of the project. You know, the, the density of the project is within what the general plan would permit. It's permitted up to 25 units per acre, and they're asking for 19.4. The open space they're providing, they say 9.8 or 9.9 where 10.7 acres is required. That's a, less than a 10% deviation from the, from the standard. The variance for the parking spaces are minimal, about 3% it looks like. But then, just to speak on that, it's the physical location of this particular development is going to be on a bus route, which would give it pretty good proximity to the work, work centers, the Fiesta, the Texas, as well as downtown. I think we can't lose track of that. The price of these units, whether they be for sale or for rent, which will, I'm sure, vary based upon what the market will tolerate, but it falls well within the category of workforce housing. So I, I think when we, we look at those considerations, I, I think we've got a piece of land there that's odd-shaped. We've been dealing with for years, wanting some kind of development there. So I'm inclined to support the request for the project as presented.
Just a couple of comments. This has been a, I wouldn't say contentious, but it's been a, a project that's been on the radar. I attended that neighborhood meeting, and although there was not an overwhelming crowd, there was one gentleman there that had some concerns. One of the things is that, that along the Rancho corridor, we don't create what could be looked at down the years as some type of blight or a, a, a type of development that would deteriorate over a period of time. One of the things that's important about these projects is to make sure that, we would all wish we had a project that came in with, with no, with no variances. But keep in mind that a variance is, is something that's created by, by the applicant. And with a, with a project of this size, there is a shortage of parking, and there is a shortage of open space. So based on those self-created hardships and, and with the expected future of this important corridor, I, I won't be able to support, support this request at this time due to those self-imposed hardships that's created. Anytime you're putting up a complex that's going to have upwards of, of a total of, of, I think, about 300 and, or even more, 604 units and apartments, you're going to need all those parking spaces. And so, and you're going to need that open space for people to move throughout those complexes. So why, I, I do commend the developer and his track record, but I do think he can go back and come back with a project that doesn't have various variances and meets all the requirements as well. So those are my comments.
Any more comments and questions by the board?
I would have one question for staff, you know, and that is about the separation from the condos being one standard and the separation for the apartments being different. I know we have standalone homes that have a, some of them have a... I know we have standalone homes that have a, some of them have a, a five foot, we've even seen them with four foot side setbacks. What's the logic or what we've got going there?
Mr. Chairman, through you. The setbacks for residential plan development are set by the site plan and the developer, so those standards are set by the site plan itself. I believe there was an error in the staff report and the condo buildings are nine feet apart. Is that not correct?
That, that is correct. And to be more specific, it's the side, side yard setback, which, you know, is nine feet. So that's, that is actually fairly substantial when you consider the side yard setbacks, when many homes have, many developments do have less, less of a standard than that.
Excuse me, Chairman, before we vote. Mr. Cook, I asked you, I'd like to disclose that I met with you, I believe, twice regarding once on this item and once on something else. And I asked you about the, the unit for a disabled patron and I'm wondering, did you find out the answer for me on that?
Yes, we are absolutely going to be provide, everything's going to be to ADA code and we're absolutely going to be meeting that.
Thank you.
Just another quick, quick observation. We looked at this, I looked at this and compared the architectural features of this building. I looked at this versus the budget suites. And I know that at, at, at the neighborhood meeting, the, the developer mentioned that this will be a notch above that. But when I look at this and look at the elevations, I, I see no difference in that in the budget suite. These buildings, I believe each of these units will be two and three stories. And then there was a question of was there an elevator going to be in the units? And, and I think the answer was no, there wasn't. And if you, if you look closely at this building and you look at it in, in terms of a budget suite, it's, it's, it's the same carbon copy blueprint, so.
And just one, one comment to that, Mr. Chairman. This, unlike the budget suites, this is going to be a minimum of six month or yearly leases. Budget suites are anywhere from, you know, daily, weekly, monthly. So there is a significant difference in that aspect.
That may be true, but there's also a economic impact too. If you advertise this six months to twelve month leases and the first hundred and twenty days, nobody comes in for six to twelve months, then you're going to be back to one day, one week, or flags out on the, on, on Rancho saying ninety-nine dollar move-in special.
We, we could, we could also make it a condition of approval that it's six month or greater lease, you know, leases for the apartments.
So I, I don't think we can control that as well. Commissioner Evans?
Yes, I have one more question. I believe on the variance which you're asking for, apparently it's much smaller than the original application for a reduction in the open space. You're indicating it's less than ten percent now, the, whatever the, the code calls for, you're developing ten percent less than, or nine percent, I believe, is what you would refer to. In the conditions for approval, if approved conditions, I'm not showing anything in there about the in lieu of, is that a part of?
Yes, absolutely. It's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars and some change, the in lieu of contribution.
So a hundred and sixty thousand dollars and change would be...
On top of the...
Donated to the city's park to be earmarked for public purposes for the public parks in the area?
That's absolutely correct.
Very good. I think this would see my support. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Seeing no more comments or questions, we'll entertain a motion on...
Mr. Chairman?
Item nineteen.
Item nineteen, I'll make a motion for approval of Z O N two nine six six one, with all conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval on item nineteen, yes vote is for the approval. Item twenty?
Item twenty, V A R two nine six six three, move for approval subject to conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of item twenty, a yes vote is for approval of the Please cast your vote. That motion has passed. Item twenty-one?
Item twenty-one, G A R two nine nine five eight, move for approval subject to conditions.
Mr. Chairman, before we vote on that motion, there was some reference, the, the applicant, you're stating that this will not be a short-term rental property?
Correct. It's six month or, or greater is, is for the apartments. That's correct.
And Director Wheeler, if it were a less than six month period, does that require a separate, is that a separate type of application?
Chairman and Commissioner Evans, this application is for apartment units. It is not for extended stay, so the application is limited to the apartment use pursuant to the definitions in Title nineteen.
Okay, so essentially approval of this would to some extent prohibit an extended stay type of weekly rental situation. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Motion on the floor on item twenty-one was for approval. A yes vote is for the approval. Please cast your vote. That motion has passed. Item twenty-two?
On twenty-two, S D R two nine six five eight, I'll move for approval subject to conditions. And on condition number seven, that should state that the twenty feet is for apartment use and should further state there's nine feet between buildings for condo use. Then on item number twelve, it was asked for a, item there. Director Wheeler, do you have something on that one?
If I may, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Steinman, on condition number twelve, the sentence will be added that a phasing plan may be approved by the Department of Planning and Development.
Is that all right with that?
Yeah.
And that's still amended. And then on item number twenty-six, there was a clarification that the homeowners association will be established only for condo use.
Correct, yes.
Correct?
Yes.
That's required.
I just wanted to...
That's my motion.
And the nine foot is the side setback for...
Yeah.
Motion's on the floor, please cast your vote. Item twenty-two. And that motion has passed.
All matters reported to council on December seventeen.
We actually respectfully request that that be pushed up to the December third.
That's impossible.
We, okay. Okay, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Could you be a little more definitive than that?
Next items are...
In concurrence with the city clerk, that is impossible.
Next item, related items twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. Item twenty-three, Z O N three zero two six one, applicant owner, A R G Jones the Second L L C, from R one single-family residential to P R professional office and parking at two one six and two two oh South Jones Boulevard. Item twenty-four, V A R three zero two six seven, to allow a thirteen-foot front yard setback where twenty feet is required and a seventy-two front setback where residential adjacency standards require ninety-six feet for a proposed two-story office building. Item twenty-five, S D R three zero two eight eight, for a proposed four thousand nine hundred and eighty-two square foot two-story office building with waivers to allow a thirteen-foot landscape buffer where fifteen feet is required along the west perimeter and zero-foot landscape buffer along the north perimeter where five feet is required. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, this item was held in advance in order to address a few issues, one of which, which has just been passed out, is a better front rendering elevation. The elevation passed out to the commission is a, just the, the same rendering that's already in the backup, but this one is in color, they better delineate it. The one in the backup does have the dimensions and that's the one the staff would like to use as far as plan check review if this project were to be approved. In regards to the project itself, staff finds it's only to be in compliance with the general plan and is recommending approval. As to the variance, staff finds this to be a self-opposed hardship and is unable to support it and recommends denial. And as such, the site plan cannot function without the variance and recommends denial of the site plan.
Thank you. Applicant?
If I could, Greg Wild from Wild Hanson, on behalf of the, the property owners, my law office is at two oh eight South Jones, almost well right next door. It's two office buildings I built approximately eight years ago. This matter was continued over in advance for some of the concerns that the commission had. To know that I met with the neighbors that are in the back, all three adjoining neighbors viewed the plans that we showed them. We talked about the setbacks and the height of the building and they all agreed. They actually signed a document saying that they agreed with the setbacks and the elevation of the buildings. Again, they want to see the property developed instead of having it be an, an eyesore, a place where trash is dumped and graffiti is sprayed on the walls. Also, I've submitted updated photos showing that the property is fully fenced now. It's been raked and cleaned off. All the trash has been removed. And again, we do that periodically, but it has stopped since we put it, put the fence up. I've also brought pictures of neighboring buildings to show the colors again. Again, we're trying to make the buildings look the same so that they, or the same color scheme, so that as you drive along Jones, they look like one contiguous group of law offices or other professional offices. And as staff said, I brought the, the artist rendition showing the different elevations and the different color schemes and the pop-outs that are on the buildings. If I could speak to, about staff's recommendation for denial because of the variance we're seeking. Again, we're working with Jones that, it's a street that's been there for a long time. It has gone professional, or excuse me, it has gone commercial zoning. There's a lot of traffic on it. It can't be used as a residential area anymore. And again, we sought the neighbors' approval to the east and it's something that they want to see. And again, the offices we propose, I will be occupying half of the building and perhaps even the full building if my practice continues to grow. But again, it's a low-traffic type of use. And again, we're only using thirty-five percent of the property instead of the fifty percent that's allowed. Again, it's just quiet law offices along the Jones corridor. If you look at Title nineteen, it does have some discretion. It, it has an or standard. You can look at the hardship or if something's impractical. And really, we've tried to use the best practical use of this property. We had to push it forward so we'd have a twenty-four foot turnaround in the back. We preserved thirteen foot in, in the front and really seventy-two feet is quite a distance where ninety-six is required, but we just can't squeeze any more than that. If we did have the twenty feet that's required in the front and the ninety-six feet in the fr, in the back, we'd have a four to five foot building. It's just not practical. Again, this was continued over for two or three concerns the commission had, and I, I think we've met those concerns. If the commission has any other questions, we ask that, that you approve this project and let us move forward with development.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak for or against this item? Please come forth.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. I commend the applicant for, for this project. I mean, this Jones thing has always been a, a real, a real thorn on, on what we're going to do with it and this looks nice. But I would like some explanation on what, on the zero foot setback on the north. Could somebody explain that, please?
Again, I don't, I don't know that there's a zero foot setback on the north. I think we provided the five foot, or excuse me, I, I don't have the extra set of plans and I apologize, but I believe there's thirteen feet on the north and the south.
Yes, staff?
I believe Mr. Farlow is referring to the zero foot landscape buffer along the north property line and not the setback itself. And that's where the trash enclosure is, therefore it necessitates a waiver as the trash enclosure is located within the landscape buffer.
Yes, and I apologize. We've talked about that before, how there's some concerns that the doors might be left open. Again, we've done all we can. We've, we've met with, well, my contractor met with Public Works to decide where to put that and that's just the best place that we could find. Again, we are designing it with a lid that automatically shuts even if they were to leave it open. It will automatically shut after time and also to keep other people from, from dumpster diving. I'll be glad to do whatever it takes as far as the doors, but it does need doors and perhaps we could put a sliding mechanism on it that shuts after time. Again, I'll be the one occupying the offices and I'll make sure that it's shut after, after each time the trash is removed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to go ahead and close the public hearing. Mr. Evans?
Yes, this was the application, if I'm not mistaken, where I had concerns about the two couches and the concrete that we had seen and you're indicating that has since been cleaned up, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and I appreciate that. I, once again, just to remind you that when you're coming forward with an application that's asking for something of this body, at least if you want my vote, it'd be real smart to do that prior to them going out and taking those pictures. In your justification letter, you talk about the need for this to go from residential to commercial or professional. And to some extent, I agree with it, but I would once again say that when you, in your last sentence, you say that it's your intention, you know, to showcase this area and then you talk about for a neighborhood that's currently decaying. And once again, I would say that any property owner that has trash like that is one of the reasons for the decay. So I appreciate your efforts at cleaning it up. The one thing that I do have a continuing concern over is the, the barrier or some sort of a, a separation on the east property line where there are still residential properties on, I believe it's Mallard Street. Those properties, I'm assuming their backyards would back up to your property. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. The, the property along Jones actually sits up about two or three feet higher.
So would it be fair to say that Jones would actually look down onto their property or is it vice versa? You, you're saying your property is higher than the ones on Mallard?
Yes, it's about two feet lower. Well, it depends on where you are on the street and then as you, as you travel, as you travel south, it seems to get deeper in the backyards. The backyards are lower than the, than those that are on Jones.
Okay, so the residential properties that adjoin or abut your property are somewhat lower than yours?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. What about some kind of landscaping, trees, something, so that those people who go out into their backyards don't see your two-story building and I'm assuming is, they're parking around the side or maybe where they, where they get to see a tree rather than a rooftop and a, you know, a commercial building?
Well, there, it's already planned to have the trees as is required every, and I apologize, I think it's every ten feet. And there is an existing tree and I'd like to develop that and leave that in if I could. It's quite a large tree on the two twenty South Jones. I think you could see it in one of these pictures. But yes, I mean, certainly we'll put trees along that eastern boundary. Also, if you were to walk through all those commercial projects, the ones that I had previously approved do not have any landscaping on the east.
Well, and I think that's a mistake.
Yeah, yes, I do. And that's why we've...
That's why I'm asking, you know, I, I'm always perplexed when someone comes forward and says, "Look at the low standard and we should be able to meet that low standard." I'm saying that it isn't a big deal in my mind to put some kind of screening up to screen your property. You're asking, if I'm not mistaken, you're asking for your property to be closer to the residential than what our code allows. And all I'm asking is that you screen it properly with landscaping to mitigate and minimize any of the intrusion that you would create by allowing, for us allowing you to build closer to residential than what the code allows.
Again, we're not seeking the minimum. We do have a five to eight foot landscaping buffer and to be honest with you, it'll be the only buffer along that Jones area for all those commercial pieces. And yes, we are going to put trees in there as required, as required by landscaping.
But what's required also is the setbacks and you're asking us to waive it and I'm just telling you what I want to see if you want my vote.
If I could finish, and also we'll put additional screening on top of the walls if that's something that you would like, that you would like us to do or that staff recommends.
Is this, any of this included in a landscape plan that we've been, that's been submitted to the city?
Yes, actually, along the east property line, the applicant is providing seven trees where six are required at this time. where six are required at this time. And along the west property line, they're providing the five trees where required. In the north and south, they're requiring twelve trees, and they're providing fifteen.
So is it the staff's opinion that that may be sufficient and protect those neighbors that still live on Mallard?
Yes, that exceeds the minimum standards. Having seven trees where six is required does exceed for that area, and I don't know if you would be able to get an additional tree in there that would be viable.
Thank you.
A few more comments or questions. Commissioner Quinn?
Yes, thank you for providing the rendering. That's what I asked for two weeks ago, and it looks lovely. I visited your property on the, just about, oh, a week and a half ago, and it was all cleaned up, and it was fine. I drove around the back and kind of looked to see what the neighbors would be looking at, and I noticed that there are other two-story buildings along the way. So I think that this is going to enhance the neighborhood, and you're going to see my support tonight. And about the concrete, I did some investigating about it just sitting there and looking terrible, but I discussed it with a contractor that I know well, and he says that in the process of removing it, it should come out at building time, not before, because it would cost you more money. So tonight, I'm going to show my full support of this project and wish you a lot of luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Steinman?
No, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I just... Ms. Ellsworth?
Well, I want to thank you for addressing the concerns that some of the commissioners have raised. I think you've done a fine job at listening to concerns and then addressing them and bringing to us revised plans, with plans that meet those concerns. And I commend you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no more comments or questions, we'll entertain a motion on item 23.
I'd like to make that motion, please, for approval of the zone change, zoning 30261 for approval, with all staff's recommendations.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 23. Please cast your vote.
And then going over to number 24.
One moment, one moment. You've got to post the, Commissioner Trowbridge. That motion has passed. Item 24?
Thank you. Number 24, the variance 30267, a motion for approval also with all staff's recommendations. And is that where the trees are on the side?
No, that's on the...
It's fine.
Fine.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 24. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed. Item 25?
The same, motion for approval of SDR 30288 for approval with all staff's recommendations. Thank you.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 25. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
All items go forward to Council on December 17.
Thank you. Item 26, VAR 30271, Applicant Tower Realty and Development LLC, owner Regal Plaza LLC, to allow a proposed ten-foot-tall, four-hundred-and-thirty-five-square-foot roof sign where an eight-foot-tall, one-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot roof sign is the maximum allowed at 5831 West Craig Road. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, this item was held in abeyance to allow the applicant to redesign the sign in order to better conform with the architectural features and possibly meet code. The applicant has done so. The sign now complies with the height limit, and that variance is no longer required. The only variance that is required at this time is the square footage, and staff is still recommending denial as it doesn't comply with code. But if approved, staff would like to add a condition that states the variance shall be only for the one-hundred-and-ninety-four square feet of signage, where one-hundred-and-fifty square feet is the maximum.
Okay. Mr. Haywood?
Mr. Chairman, Madam Director, Commissioners, my name is Kelvin Haywood, 4300 El Como Way. With me is representative for the owner, Lisa DePass. Yes, you're absolutely right. The last time we were here, we were asked to redesign, and we did so, we submitted that. We also went out to talk to the residents of the four that submitted or had a comment. So we went out. We did not reach them. We left a photo of what we, at that time, planned for the actual site, left information for them to call back. There were no calls, no responses. We also did the second thing that was asked, and hopefully you have the diagram that I created to show what the residents would see if they can pan in or if you have it.
We can see it.
And the rear of the site, you can actually see the distance. There's no way from the back of that site that a resident or anyone, I mean, from that distance can see up over the back of the wall and another hundred-and-seventy-some-odd feet to the front of the building. It's just, there's just no possible way. What I mentioned last time, you'd actually have to be twenty, twenty-five feet up in the air at that distance to see anything over the top of the roof. So we sat down with the owner, went over that information. We went over the redesign. The owner, however, is, likes the first design. And because of the research that we did, he would strongly ask that you approve the first design, not the redesign that I believe you have before you. And I stand before you asking exactly the same thing, your approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience who'd want to speak for or against this, please come forward.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain on this item. Mr. Howard has done some paywork, has done some design work for a client of mine, still an open contract.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, to clarify then, based upon the applicant's comments, the revised plan is not before you this evening. The original plan is before you this evening. The change to condition that Mr. Rankin just gave you is no longer relevant, and they are still seeking the variance on the two issues on the original plan, and the revised plan is not before you based upon his testimony.
That's absolutely correct. Madam Director. Mr. Farlow?
Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I'd like to see the design of the sign, the blueprint of the sign for one thing. The second thing is, the applicant states that the renter or whoever's going to be using this sign wants the larger, the larger sign. But it's against our code. You know, he would probably want something as big as the house if he could get away with it. But I don't see that that should cut any ice with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to comment on item 26? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Go back to Director Wheeler.
All right, Mr. Rankin, we need to have the original submittal.
So the original submittal was designed with, which kind of looked like it had a bit of embellishment on the building, correct?
Yes, it was sitting up on the roof.
Sitting up on the roof.
Where's the original?
Mr. Haywood, do you have a rendering of the original?
Yes, it's right before you.
Can we zoom down on it? That's the original.
That's it.
And this is the one you're saying that your client would like to have as opposed, can you put a copy of the one you redesigned?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Put it right on top of that so we can...
Okay. If you wanted to...
There we go. So there's the, so he does not want that one.
He does not want that one, no.
Okay. So because this has come back in and we redesigned with this one, I guess my question to Director Wheeler is, the redesign is the one that we held to have him resubmit?
If I may, the redesign is not before, the applicant has indicated he's not interested in the redesign and he's not submitting the redesign, correct?
That's correct.
So that's off the table. The only issue before you is the original application, which requires the height variance and the size variance. And that is where you would make your motion.
And again, the reason that the owner is requesting that, one, that the signage is important for his branding, his branding for the Vegas Water Sports. Secondly, again, looking at the location of the signage, the, what it affects, and how it, again, will not at all impede on the residents behind them. One thing I did not mention earlier was that three of the residences that responded were, I believe, about a half a mile to the west of the property. There was only one that was, again, directly behind that responded. But again, when we went out, no one, he didn't come back, or he or she didn't come back and object strongly to what we're presenting.
Thank you. You showed us last time he had the same design on another building. Was that one, was that located in the City of Las Vegas, or was that...
No, so that's in Henderson.
That was in Henderson.
Yes.
Okay, so, and I can understand, he wants, he wants, I guess his thinking is that any shopping center you go to where he has this business, you'll be able to identify it by that brand-name sign. I understand that.
Sure, like a Walmart, Oylows, again, directly across the street, they have their branding. It's the same size wherever it goes. They're not asked to reduce the size of the signage. They're not asked to change it in any way because it's, that's their brand. And that's what we're, that's what we're looking at, looking at in this particular project. It's a brand. And it's, you know, he strongly suggested it should stay the same, and I agree with that.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, any comments or questions from the board? Commissioner Ellsworth?
I spoke about this last time with you, and I was concerned because I live right near here, and I was concerned about the neighbors that have to, that are going to see this from the backside. And we didn't have a line-of-site diagram like you showed us just a minute ago. That line-of-site diagram, is that for the, does that apply to the first one or the second sign?
It applies to both of them.
To both?
Really, I did it for the first one. Once we, once I sat down with the owner to take a look at the redesign, he says, "Well, what does it look like with the first one?" And if you can, you can see, this is the height of the, height of the sign. This...
Of which sign? The first one?
The first one.
The first one.
Yes, Commissioner Ellsworth. And if you see this three to one, this is the line of sight. That's, that's what he's, that's what he's looking at.
So the neighbors are never going to see this?
From the front.
Not from the back? No, I'm talking about from the, the neighbors from the back.
No, they're, it's physically possible. I actually have a photo standing in the rear of the building. That's what you see.
But the further he...
There's no way that you can see up over the wall and another hundred-and-fifty, I'm sorry, another hundred-and-seventy-six feet from the top of the wall, from the back of anyone's backyard. It's humanly impossible.
Well, that was my big concern last time, and that's why I suggested to you, hey, let's redesign this in a way the neighbors won't see. But if you're telling me, no, look, the neighbors aren't going to see it anyway, well, then great, great, because I don't have an objection to the first sign at all, as long as it's not going to be an eyesore for the neighbors on, around the backside or the backside of this development. And if you're telling me, no, it's not going to be an eyesore, they won't even be able to see it, then I have no objection. I, in fact, like I said before, I want to see something going to be successful in that corner spot. It's been sitting empty for a long time, and I'd sure like to see something to make it a success. And if that's what you want, I'd support you.
Sure, thank you.
Any more questions or comments by the board? Commissioner Evans?
Yeah, just one. I've got a little more comfort in this, but I'm still a little confused because what's before us is what was before us once before, right?
Yes.
And, and it's for a ten-foot-high roof sign on top of the roof?
Yes.
And, and the roof is what, thirty-five feet or...
We are at twenty-six feet, six inches right now to the top of the parapet.
So would that make the total height of the sign about thirty-six to forty feet in height?
Yes, yes, we're at one-thirty-six-six.
Okay. And the code says that you're allowed one-hundred-and-fifty square feet, and you're looking for four-hundred-and-thirty-five square feet?
I'm not, I'm not sure, you know, I did the math. I'm not sure how they got that, because they say we're one-hundred-and-ninety percent over or something like that. So, but if that's what staff came up with, yes.
I'm just going by the application, and this is my concern. Probably this in itself is not that egregious, and I would agree with my fellow commissioner. If it's not that visible from the surrounding residences, it would not cause me a great deal of concern. My only concern is that in the seven and a half years on this body, I see where we chip away at the standards that we create. And I think that you have an affirmative responsibility to make a case that whatever you're seeking is going to ultimately be good for the community. And I was talking with someone the other day from Scottsdale, and I'm always reluctant to compare cities to our own, but she was telling me that they have incredible standards and that the city is beautiful, that they don't have a lot of, you know, they have good landscape standards and they have very stringent sign standards so that as you drive through the community, it's actually beautiful. And I know that in many other communities that I visit, I always scratch my head and I say, "Why can't we do that in Las Vegas?" And then when I come every other week to the planning commission, it's always a request for a variance. Somebody wants something higher than somebody else, somebody wants something bigger than what it allows, closer than what it should be. And I guess what I'm saying is I want to hear from you, the applicants, that the City of Las Vegas is going to be a better city as a result of whatever it is that you're seeking. And unfortunately, I don't get that a lot. So I go by, to some extent, our staff, which, you know, they're professional planners, they don't pull this stuff out of the air. It's, it's reasoned and thought out, and they have to follow the code. I think we get a greater degree of discretion, but I sure would like to be able to say at the end of the day that the City of Las Vegas is going to look better and that the community is going to be well-served by the, by the yes votes that we make allowing variances. And I'm not entirely comfortable with this application still.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. That is a, that is a great question and great concern. I think in certain instances where you have existing property and clients or owners want to move into that particular spot, and it doesn't fit some of the signage or it's not exactly what, what's needed to fit the standards of Las Vegas. So we request these variances, I think. And I've stood before you a number of times, and I've asked those same variances, and I believe it's because we are trying to make the city better. We are trying to fill a space that's been vacant for a while. We are trying to create jobs for, you know, certainly, especially in this type of economy. So I think those things, items, are making this city better. I think it's not anything that's gaudy. We're not, we're not going to light it up with neon. We're not going to, you know, color it purple. We're not going to do any of those things. We're going to stay with the type of architecture that's there. We won't get away from that. The variance, again, that we're requesting, it's a little bit higher, it's a little bit longer. But it stays within that particular type of architecture. It does not affect the residences. And again, I agree with you. If it, if it affected the residences where, you know, it was even making noises and all those kind of things, I think, you know, I wouldn't stand before you to, to, to request that. But a little bit higher, a little bit wider, I don't think that diminishes Las Vegas or what's the, the recommendations of staff and the research that they've done.
Commissioner Evans, are you, you good? Commissioner Steinman?
Let's talk about branding. Let me give you an example of McDonald's. I've probably seen a hundred different signs on McDonald's. And one of them is located in a city in Ohio where I was on the planning commission back in the seventies. And they said they wanted their usual sign. It ended up an eight-by-ten wooden sign on the ground with uplighting, and they did fine. Now, the problem at this location is that by putting this sign up, it takes away from the symmetry of that entire center where all the signs are wall-mounted. And suddenly, you put this monster on top of the building, and you change all that. I never really thought there was a problem from the rear of these things. I never really thought there was a problem from the rear of these things because the building was so high in the back, nobody could ever see over it. My problem is from the front and how it's going to look. And you could have designed the sign that was down off the roof across, you could have done that, and you would have gotten away with more square footage than a hundred and fifty square feet, and I would have been fine with it. But the fact you still want this monster on the top, no way I'm a vote for it.
Any more comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion on item twenty-six.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item number twenty-six, subject to, the original one that is, as it was originally drawn, subject to all of staff's conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of item twenty-six, the original rendering. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
With Commissioner Truesdale abstaining, and this is final action in the absence of an appeal to the office of the city clerk within ten days.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Items twenty-seven and twenty-eight. Item twenty-seven, SUP 29146, applicant Nerissa Thomas, owner Larry D. and Nerissa L. Thomas, for a proposed truck rental use at 3700 North Rancho Drive. Item twenty-eight, SDR 29787, for proposed truck rental use with chain link fencing and a waiver of all landscape requirements. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, since the October 23rd planning commission, the applicant has submitted a revised landscape plan, a revised landscape plan, even though an improvement over the original submittal still fails to comply with the landscape buffer depth requirements as well as the number of plants and the associated spacing of said plants. Therefore, staff has recommended denial of the site development plan review and the associated special use permit. Staff would like to amend condition number one of SDR 29787 as submitted to the clerk to reflect the following: All developments shall be in conformance with site plan and landscape plan date stamped 11/06/08, except as amended by condition herein. Please be aware there is supporting documentation provided in your backup package. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant?
Hello, Nerissa Thomas, 6500 West El Campo Grande. Since I've been here a couple of times already, am I supposed to review or recap anything or just go from where we left off?
You can recap just a little bit, and then we'll move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Breathe.
As we applied for a city license, a short-term lease or license to be a Penske Truck Rental Agent, we came up against the site develop, or the special use permit that was required and then the site development review. As we began looking at the requirements for the site development review, it, the staff made comments as to the temporary parking and the asphalt requirements or paving parking, requirements, and so we felt like we had to volunteer to asphalt that whole back area of our, of our property. And so we volunteered to do that. Then at our meeting last month, Commissioner Evans mentioned that he didn't think that that much asphalting was going to be necessary for the trucks that we needed. We have revised the asphalting to be possibly maybe half of, of that back lot. The front part is already asphalted, we said that we would refinish and, and re-strike that. Then as we also looked at the landscaping, we had a design for, to redo the planters that are already existing, and, and then during the meeting last month, a planter to complete this back portion of the lot was requested.
I think that was from Commissioner Ellsworth?
Yes.
Yes, correct.
Yes. And we're also still asking for a waiver of putting the sidewalks, curbs and gutters and streetlights along that side. That part, the back part of our lot, we have had this property in our family for a lot of years. My husband and I have run the auto repair shop since 91, and this truck rental part of our business is just in addition to our auto repair. And we need just temporary parking for the trucks only when they're there waiting to be rented or for whatever. So this temporary parking area is what we need for the, for the truck rentals. We have, in the past, done everything we could to comply with licensing laws and local and state authorities. Several years ago, we were requested to gravel that back lot at the request of the Clark County Health Department for temporary parking related to our auto repair, and at that time we complied with that requirement or that request. When the business behind us, to the north of us, actually, no, to the east, was developed, Dan's Drive Line, we voluntarily paved in front of, on Duncan, the part that hadn't been completed, this part that's right in front of the, the new planter that, that we're going to design or to complete, and we voluntarily paved that. And, and then several years ago, the EPA required us to abandon a perfectly good septic system to connect to city sewer at a cost of $65,000, and not, not meaning to whine, but we haven't recovered financially from that yet. So, you know, our desire is to do what, what you require and what's requested of us. As we're looking at the requirements to bring everything on our property up to code, since we built in 91, it's, it has come a long way. And as we met with staff on the landscaping, one of the issues that we had last month was that we were looking at fifteen-gallon trees, and so we changed that to twenty-four-inch box trees. We added more trees so that down the Duncan side, we will be compliant in the number of trees and number of shrubs that are required according to code, and also along the Rancho side, we're compliant as far as the number of trees and shrubs. Then on the, the side that's next to Dan's Drive Line, that's an alleyway, and normally the standard practice is not to require any landscaping or trees, although I guess there's not exactly a code. So one of your staff then, as we met, as I met a few weeks ago, said that we would be compliant on three of the fourth sides as far as landscaping and trees go. Of course, this side is right next to, used to be called Kawasaki, it's now Ride Now, and their building is right up next to our property line.
Very good, thank you.
Can, can I interrupt you for a minute?
Sure.
Because I'm getting lost.
I'm sorry.
I remember when we were here before and you went back, and it looks like you put together a landscape plan, the one in our back updated 11/06, and if it's what I'm seeing here, it's, it's a substantial improvement, and I appreciate that very much. Is that kind of where we're at at this point, is that the applicants made some changes that?
Yes, she made some changes at the request of Commissioner Ellsworth, and then came back in the staff and went through it, so...
Okay.
Yeah, and I think, just like you said, Commissioner Evans, she's come a long way with, with that plan. So are you completed with your presentation?
Oh, I was just going to show you some pictures of the neighboring businesses, but...
We're good.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask a quick question in at this time. On the application that you're seeking today, I think you were going to pave a portion of the lot that for the temporary, you only got like three trucks or something, you were going to put asphalt in there, and there isn't at this time, right?
Correct.
Question for my fellow commissioners or staff when she completes her presentation: Is that really necessary if the trucks aren't being moved around? If they're just, it's temporary storage, is there an EPA standard or something that would require us to put in asphalt when in fact they're temporary storage and not being moved around the site?
All vehicles must be parked on a paved surface.
Including, would that include like the chat or?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Done with your presentation?
Pretty much.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody like to speak for or against this item? Please come forward.
Thank you, Todd Parlow, 240 North High Street. I appreciate what the applicant has done. However, the applicant has also indicated that this property has been in the family for a long, long time, and it will remain so in all the foreseeable future. If we are ever going to bring this property up to the current codes, if not now, when? We have no sidewalk along there, we just approved a huge project just right north of there. There's going to be a whole bunch more traffic in here just, just because of the mass of people that are coming. And if we don't get the sidewalks curb gutter and get rid of the freight, the chain link fence, bring this up to code now, I don't see this coming to fruition within the next forty years. So this is what we got to think about.
Thank you.
May I, may I respond to that?
Yes, ma'am. Would anybody else like to speak? We'll close the public hearing, allow the applicant time to respond.
Okay, thank you.
Pardon me, ma'am, there is somebody like to speak. Come on up, sir, I'm sorry. I'll reopen the public hearing on items twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
I really represent the applicant's attorney, Bruce Cox. What I really like to do is make a clarification. My, I live at 6511 West Deer Springs Way. The applicant's actually owned two lots there. When, when they built the garage facing Rancho, everything was up to code there when they built it. The back lot, they hope to, at a later time, build on, and that's why they don't want to asphalt it, because they'd have to dig it up if they put a building there which would front on Duncan. And, and they don't want to do something that, that they would have to basically undo, dig up asphalt when they develop that. The, the back lot, we almost say during the intermediate time would be used for the overflowed truck parking. There, there was two lots there, when the back lot is developed, that's when they would bring things up to code on Duncan. They, they are willing to do the planters and things now because it would help beautify things. They, they don't want to have to do the sidewalks and things until there's a plan for however they develop that.
It's... No, I, I hear what you're saying, but even, even over a period of time, if code does change and happens to catch some of these properties, you know, in, kind of in the middle, still, code is what it is to bring things into compliance. You just can't say, "Well, I know that, but I'm, I'm going to build someday." But like, the member of the public just represented a minute ago, when is that? Today or forty years from now?
Well, obviously, the, a lot of things depends on the, on the economy.
Sure.
And, and how things develop. This, this area is developing, and they hope to develop with the area. Now, the, now Mrs. Thomas talked about that they had to bring, they were requested or required to bring, to hook onto the sewer system. When they did that, they had to dig out the asphalt that they put on Duncan some twelve years ago when they voluntarily upgraded, and so they, they were required then to dig that up, and so within the last two years, that, that, most of that has been re-asphalated out in the street where they had to dig up the, the street to hook, to hook onto the sewer and, and run pipe further down to Duncan. So they, they, I think, have gone above and beyond what would normally have been required, the things that they've done on Duncan.
Yeah, I understand that, and, and this board, I think, certainly works with applicants the best we can. We certainly can see by, by the plan that she represents today from the original one, we see the, the vast improvements that are in there. But yet, it's still not a full plan that's all the way up to compliance, but I don't know how we're going to vote on this, but I, I personally myself see some, some, some room to work with her on it. I see she's, she's come, come a lot on that plan. So with that, are you finished with your comments, Mr. Cox?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing is closed. Comments or questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Commissioner Ellsworth?
Ms. Thomas, I've looked at this reasonably close over the last couple of weeks, and I, and I see this to make sure I understand it, and I'll also for the benefit of my fellow commissioners. The only reason you're putting the asphalt in on the second lot is because you have to park these trucks on asphalt, is that correct? And so if that weren't a requirement, you wouldn't do anything with that back lot?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay, so because you have to put down a little more asphalt, you're going to put down the minimum required, which according to your most recent diagram, which is, I don't know how wide this may be, maybe a thirty-foot wide strip across on that new lot, on the second lot in the back. Is that right?
And on the north side there.
Right, okay, and then you're going to go ahead and put in a nice planter along that, that Duncan, along Duncan there, along with a gravel path?
And planter.
And, and the planter with the trees, you, you put it to the twenty-foot trees that we were asking for before, correct?
Right.
And so as I see this, I think you have made some efforts to comply the best you can, particularly when you're really not developing that lot. All you're doing is put down a little bit of asphalt so that you can maintain a, a second division of your business there, which is the trucking business. And I, I think you've done a fine job, and because that, I support you in it, and I think, I think that even though code may technically require you to develop the offsites there, the curb and gutter and so forth, it seems to me that this merits an exception because really you aren't developing that second lot. Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
More comments or questions from commissioners? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion on item twenty-seven.
I'll, I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of item number twenty-seven, subject to, of course, staff's conditions.
And if I may, Chairman, Public Works, Bart Anderson. If you do wish to allow the deferral of the sidewalk improvements, the condition as written requires them to be constructed, but if you wish to allow the deferral, I have an alternative condition that I would like to read in at your direction.
Go ahead, please, let's see what that up here is.
Replace condition number eleven with the following: Sign and record a covenant-running with land agreement for the possible future installation of half-street improvements including curb and gutter, sidewalks, street lighting, permanent paving, and possibly fire hydrants and sewers on Duncan Drive adjacent to this site prior to the issuance of any permits for this site.
Would you be agreeable to that, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
And yes, we'll add that as a condition as well on my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. There's a motion on approval of item twenty-seven with amended condition. Please, please cast your vote.
It was on twenty-eight, right, Bart?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, let's go ahead and vote on item twenty-seven, motion for approval. Cast your vote. That motion has passed. Commissioner Ellsworth, item twenty-eight?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve that as well with the condition that was just read into the record a moment ago.
Motion on the floor to approve item twenty-eight with amended condition is read in by Public Works and additional comments by Director Wheeler.
If I may, change condition number one to reference the site plan and landscape plan dated November 6th, '08. Delete condition number two in its entirety. And that's it, and the condition changed by Public Works, thank you.
Okay. Motion's on the floor, please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
Both matters go forward to the City Council on December 17.
Thank you. Items twenty-nine through thirty-four are related items. Item twenty-nine, MOD 30617, applicant owner International Church of Las Vegas, Inc., from L. Low Density Residential and P. Park School Recreation Open Space to PF. Public Facilities approximately 660 feet east of the southwest corner of Cliff Shadow Parkway and the 215 Beltway. Item thirty ZON 31062, from U. Undeveloped PCD Plan Community Development. Item thirty Z O N three one zero six two, from U undeveloped P C D Plan Community Development, general plan designation, to P D Plan Development at the southwest corner of Cliff Shadow Parkway and Novat Street. Item thirty-one, V A R three zero six twenty, to allow an eighty-five-foot-tall building where two stories or thirty-five feet is the maximum permitted, and to allow a site disturbance of three point seven eight acres where three point five six is the maximum permitted, approximately six hundred and sixty feet east of the southwest corner of Cliff Shadows Parkway and the two fifteen Beltway. Item thirty-two, V A R three one three nine four, to allow one hundred and seventy-five parking spaces where three hundred and seventy-five are required, approximately six hundred and sixty feet east of the southwest corner of Cliff Shadows Parkway and the two fifteen Beltway. Item thirty-three, V A C three zero six two two, petition to vacate U.S. government patent easements generally located approximately sixty-three feet southwest of the intersection of Cliff Shadows Parkway and Novat Street. Item thirty-four, S D R three zero six one four, for a proposed five-story, eighty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty square-foot church slash house of worship with waivers of the Lone Mountain West wall and landscape standards at the southwest corner of Cliff Shadows Parkway and the two fifteen Beltway. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed major modification of the Lone Mountain West master plan to amend the land use designation of two of the subject parcels to public facilities is compatible with the surrounding land use destinations, and staff is recommending approval. The related rezoning will facilitate one of the subject parcels incorporation into the Lone Mountain West master plan. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the application. Staff is also recommending approval of the associated vacation of U.S. government patent easements as they are no longer needed in their current configuration. The proposed site development plan review, however, fails to comply with the hillside ordinance Title Nineteen and the Lone Mountain West development standard, as is evidenced by the associated waiver and variance request. Therefore, staff cannot support these applications as proposed deviations denote the site as being overbuilt and is recommending denial. Staff would like to amend condition number four of site development plan review, S D R three zero six one four, as submitted to the clerk to read as follows. A waiver of the Lone Mountain West wall and landscape standards is hereby approved to allow retaining walls up to sixteen feet in height without intermediate terracing, and to allow zero-foot landscape buffer along a portion of the south property line and two-foot landscape buffer along a portion of the western property line. Please note that additional letters, protest, and support have been received. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicants?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Mark Jones, thirty-six ten North Rancho Road, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight nine one three O, representing the applicant. And with me tonight is the applicant, Pastor Paul Goulet, with the International Church of Las Vegas. What I'd like to do is a brief introduction to the project. It, if I could go to the overhead here just a moment. Project is located within the land Lone Mountain West land use plan, generally at the intersection of two fifteen and Cheyenne, more specifically, at the intersection of Novat and Cliff Shadows Parkway. Our plan here is to develop a eighty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty square-foot building that is built into the mountain. We have taken a unique design approach by taking the first floor and cutting that into the mountain to be sure we keep the building as low as possible to maintain the view line to that ridge. The access to the site, well, first, before I get to that, the, in addition to the engineering that we've put into this, is the compatibility of the architecture itself with the surrounding land color. We've taken the building and given it a shape mirroring the mountain behind it, making sure it's, as I said, low enough to keep the view lines possible, and incorporating the color palette of the architecture to blend in with the mountain as well. The access to the site is via two locations. To the north, through the La Madre Equestrian Trailhead, we have access here. And secondly, off of Desert Hope Drive, the yet-developed Desert Hope Drive, to the east. The parking that we're providing is on two locations, on the campus itself, and then overflow parking to the parcel to the east. Accessed to the main campus via the crosswalk at Desert Hope Drive. In addition to that, we have complied with the master plan trails where we have accessed, the master plan calls for the trail to extend from the south through the, from the reverence project by Polte, yet to be developed, it's proposed, along the east side of our park, to Cliff Shadows, where it then connects into the La Madre Equestrian Trailhead. So we are completing that portion of the master trail. Now, there are several unique characteristics and extraordinary circumstances that we are developed, are having to develop around. Namely, the first one is the project that started in oh three, December of oh three, where we had submitted a site plan for a use permit, and which was approved. At that time, there was no specific site plan for the site. However, there was no hillside ordinance at the time as well. The plans were submitted for the tower at that time. The city, we expressed our desire to build this very similar style building with, without the requirement of the hillside ordinance at that time. In addition, we are landlocked. The year, a few years back, there was a, an agreement that was negotiated between the city and the church for disposition and development agreement for the parcel to the east owned by B L M and the remainder of the La Madre Equestrian Trailhead parcel here for providing a park and parking. We think that's a good public-private partnership that will allow the city to obtain what they need via the park that we intend to construct while we receive the benefit of the parking. At the church's cost, they will be developing this park and parking along with the park, landscaping and parking with the remaining balance of the La Madre Equestrian Trailhead. Another extraordinary circumstance that we're faced with is obviously the steep terrain in this location. As I had mentioned before, we are budding up against the mountain, and we have taken, employed the steps to creatively make use of the hillside ordinance, though we are submitting formally under the hillside ordinance now. We have to comply with that. We have, as I said, cut the first floor into this mountain to lower that overall height. And we are in compliance with hillside ordinance as regards to the, making sure that our view line to that ridge is clear and unobstructed, as you can see.
What do you mean by you've cut the first floor? And so it's into the mountain?
Yes, the first floor is cut in to the mountain. I'll show you some pictures when we get to the variances. I was going to go over a few little things on the variances. But yes, the first floor, the front of it is exposed, as you can see. This, the back half is cut into the mountain. So we've basically taken off of this height sixteen-foot plate, lowered the building, so we maintain this building as low as possible.
Okay. Is there an access road behind?
Yes, sir, there is.
And that's a cut-in into the mountain, a bit of that access road?
Well, the road is up at the second level in the back here.
Second level, okay.
Yes, yes. And so the first floor is cut in. So when you get into the, to enter the building in the back, you come in at the second floor.
Okay, okay.
Okay? All right?
Mr. Jones, I'm going to stop you right there. I'm going to go ahead and open a public hearing, because I know we're going to have some questions.
Okay, then if I could, then address the variances and then the conditions.
Exactly. And then we want to come back and go right to these variances, because I know that's where the rubber meets the road here.
That's it, thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody for, against this item? Please come forward. Yes, sir.
Yes, good evening. My name is Jeff Burbank. I live at one zero four zero nine Sloping Hill Avenue. I live about, I guess about two thousand feet east of this project site. I've lived in the area since two thousand and three. I want to express my opposition to this project. I really think it's an example of bad planning. I didn't, I didn't see this picture until tonight. And when he said it would cut right into the mountain, I think that's really disturbing. This is the La Madre Mountain Range. It was named by the Spanish explorers who came through the valley in the nineteenth century. And there's parts of it, if you go down Summerlin Parkway from the west, you can see that it looks like the profile of a reclining woman. And from my backyard and from my front yard, I can see this part of the mountains, and especially from my backyard. I just don't understand why there should be a project like this abutting the mountain itself. I mean, this is a vital, this is a marvelous natural resource for this valley, and this is way too close. In fact, it's actually abutting the mountain.
Well, I think he said he's into the mountain now, so.
Well, he's into the mountain. So, I mean, I think that's, I think that's even worse. I don't think this should be allowed. I don't think that any kind of man-made development should be allowed to just be shoved into this mountain range. I think it's gratuitous. I have no, I have nothing against a religious institution, a church, that's fine. But I think this project is really a bad idea. It's way too tall. I think it's still eighty-five feet, right? Where thirty-five feet was permitted.
Mr. Chairman, that's a question I, I'm looking at the plans that were submitted by the applicant. They're showing on their plans designating the building height at a hundred and eighty-four feet. On their plan. Now, maybe the architect didn't know what he was doing, maybe he doesn't know what he's doing with the building or the mountain. But the plan that's submitted has denoted a hundred and eighty-four feet.
They're using a hundred base. The hundred is zero.
Well, I would hate to approve this and then have no control over the height of the building.
Well, the ground elevation is one hundred.
Well, still, I just want to ask staff to verify that.
But it's not one hundred and eighty-four, no, it's eighty-five.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I have, I just have a quick question about that. Someone's going to have to explain it to me, because we've noticed this as a variance of eighty-five feet. And so, you know, I got to tell you.
Well, if I could get to the section, I would be able to explain what's going on. That's why I wanted to brief you a little bit on the variances, so.
Okay. Let me let the resident wrap up, and then we'll get back.
Okay, I just, the resident raised the height, so I was concerned about that.
I just really think this is going to mar our view of the mountains, everyone's view of the mountains. I've walked into this area with my daughter, and, you know, it's a beautiful natural area. There's been a lot of development in the area in recent years, and I accept that. But this is really going, this is beyond the pale. This is really going way too far, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you. Mr. Farlow?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. I believe I concur with the previous speaker there. On item number twenty-nine, it said it's a major modification from Low Density Residential and Park School Recreation Open Space. So at one time, were we going to make this a city park or something, and now it's changed? I'd like to know how that came about. Thank you.
Thank you. So you know one want to speak on this, we'll close the public hearing. We'll get a couple of questions. I'll give the pastor, Goulet.
Paul Goulet, eleven five six two Snow Creek Avenue. Thank you for the opportunity to share this with you. This all started, the question here is the height of the tower. I know that's a major concern. I want to thank the neighbor for expressing his concerns. We did have a family, I'm sorry. We did have a family meeting recently, or a neighborhood meeting recently, and there was one individual that expressed the same concern. Others seemed to be very supportive of it. So the discussion has started. I like discussion. I like the fact that we have a vision. The vision is the church is to build a tower. Most churches have towers or steeples. We felt it was important to, as a church, I think if you look at the east side of town, there's a beautiful Mormon temple or Mormon ward, I guess it would be called a temple. And they have a beautiful steeple. I recently was in France doing some work in leadership, and if you go to Montmartre, you see the Sacred Heart Church. On a mountain, you see Neufredame, built right next to the river. So for me, as a church, the height of it is very important to draw people to pray. This is a non-denominational, inter-denominational prayer tower to encourage people from around this city to pray. So we wanted to build it tall enough to, for people to look at and go, we want to go pray. We want to build unity. Our church is multicultural. We have some of our board members there, some of our leaders. Our church is multilingual. We want this tower to be open up to our Mormon friends, our Catholic friends, our Methodist friends, our Lutheran friends. Many of my personal friends, pastors, are in the city. And so we wanted to build something that would make a statement. I think Las Vegas is known for a lot of wonderful things. This all started with a vision. I know if you look around the city, you see beautiful buildings. The Mirage started up. You saw a lot of other amazing buildings that are tall, they're beautiful, they're full of lights. And we thought, we wanted to express our faith. I'm a Vegas lover. I'm not a, I'm not a down on the casinos, I'm not a down on some of these huge buildings. I'm a person that says, well, let's build something that will inspire faith. A tower points towards God, that's why we thought of a tower. So it really started as a vision, and the vision is unity, a vision is pointing towards God. And we have been working with the city for the last four or five years and saying, what would look nice on this mountain? And urgently, the building was going to be blue. And they said, well, no, you have to match the colors. And so our intention has been to work with our neighbors, work with the city, to produce something that will inspire spirit. Our city is reflected by a lot of different groups, and we wanted something that would bring everybody together. So it would be open to the public, it would be open to other denominations and other churches. So I wanted just to share for a moment the vision of it, and that's why it's a tower. It's to draw attention. Thank you.
I wanted to defer to our resident historian down on the other end, Mr. Evans. This is up in the area by the La Madre Mountains, and we had a neighbor here that said that the La Madre Mountains are historic in nature. I'm dealing with the Spanish and the trail, and I'd like to just lean on you for some...
Well, of course, they're historic. They're mountains. No, but I will say, listening to this in the back, the, this is, I think, the first hillside ordinance thing that came forward, and I can appreciate the uniqueness of the architecture and the fact that you're working with a site that has some constraints. Chairman Goines would recall, and so would Commissioner Truesdale, I believe, a number of years ago, we had home builders not far from here who wanted to blow up some of these mountains and flatten them out and put pads down because that's the only way they knew how to build. And I recall at the time, we were saying, are you nuts? I mean, you know, you've got a beautiful view and some topography here. Work with it. You could create, you know, a lot of value in the real estate. I think this is a good place for a church. And I don't know about the historic nature of it, other than, you know, mountains aren't new, so. But the issues, as I understand them, is that it's the major modification. Although I'm very pleased about some of the architecture, I'm curious to see what the others have to say with regard to residential adjacency and things of that nature.
There are a couple of variances here, so you've mentioned something about the height. We see on the plan, I believe Commissioner Truesdale said, a hundred and eighty-four feet. Can you explain to us how a hundred feet is zero?
The architect uses a base finished floor of one hundred. It's, you start at a hundred, you can start at zero. It's just a reference.
I'm usually used to seeing architectural plans that are submitted that start with zero. And if we, when they start with a hundred, that means we would be noticing and approving a building of a hundred and eighty-four feet if we approved this per those plans.
We would be happy, of course, of changing the architectural drawings. We're not, I don't want to get hung up on a reference number.
Well, it's very critical to us.
And I understand, and that's what I'm saying. We would be willing to input into the conditions that the reference frame is zero and the height of the building is no greater than eighty-five at this one portion. But let me, let me...
Well, hold on. If we try to make that little change through our city attorney, that may impact how this application was noticed. So we just can't say we're going to arbitrarily change it. I want to get some advice from the city attorney to see, do we then have to go back out and renotice this thing?
No, Chairman, I'm still, I'm a word guy, all right? I'm still trying to get my head around the numbers. What I think I'm hearing is that architects arbitrarily use the number one hundred instead of the number zero. Is that correct?
In this case, the architect used one hundred as the floor elevation, yes.
And so when the city is to measure, or you are to measure the steeple, the prayer tower, we're measuring from the ground? I mean, this sounds stupid. I sound like, I sound stupid right now because I'm answering, I just can't, I can't get over asking these questions. So from the ground to the top of the steeple of the prayer tower, is eighty-five feet? Is that what we're saying? But the plans say a hundred and eighty-five feet. And so my concern... And so my concern, again, is that we're approving a hundred and eighty-five foot steeple.
With the finished floor of a one hundred.
Well, Mr. Chairman, through you, it's a reduction in in the height, and we're looking at the real numbers. I would think that wouldn't require any renotice. We simply say you knock a hundred off the value.
I think that from a, from a legal perspective, we've we've noticed, we we've noticed to the public an eighty-five foot tower. Uh, we're hearing from the applicant that it is in fact an eighty-five foot tower. I think that if we have a condition that says that it shall be an eighty-five foot tower, then we, then we, then we meet uh, the provisions of the open meeting law, uh, both in form and in intent. Uh, but I can understand the confusion on the part of this board. I've been doing this for a long time, too, and I I gotta tell you, I've never seen this before. So I can understand the confusion on the part of some of the members of this board.
Thank you. Director Wheeler?
If I may, on item thirty-one, the notice is for an eighty-foot tall build, eighty-five foot tall building. That's all that can be approved, and that's what's before you today. The plans show from the one hundred point to the one eighty-four point, actually, that's your eighty-five. And therefore, both the notice and the plans are what are before you at this time.
Fantastic.
And what I'd like to understand from staff is, and what I think is the issue here, is the architect starting at a point of one hundred is, is that one hundred above street level? And then we're putting eighty-five feet on top of it, and where you're, because your other supporting documents show a grade point. And every building that we've had submitted here, we've had high-rise buildings here, five-hundred-foot towers, everybody starts at zero. So what I'm trying to really understand is, where is this hundred at, and where would, where's the street level at? Because if we started a hundred feet above street, because we sloped up parking, what the neighbors are gonna see is they see a hundred and eighty-five foot building. And that's what I don't want, I don't want to see the eighty-five foot building, per se, but we seem to have lost the the train there.
Summary, I was, I know, we're we're off track here. This is, wasn't the item I thought would be the point of contention, to be honest with you.
Well, there's more.
Uh, I'm sure. Uh, so what I, what I can offer you here is.
Looking for our vote.
Stand by Reverend. We may need you.
I'm ready.
Zoom out just a little bit, and then you can see the relationship as a, uh, to scale. Zoom out a little, please. Or not. There we, whoop, okay. Here is the ridge line on, using this as, that point there is there. This is a six-foot man standing at the intersection of Cliff Shadows and and Novat. This is his sight line. This amount of mountain is still left above. This is the eighty-five foot. The eighty-five foot is measured from that first floor to the top, top of that tower. And I want to emphasize that the eighty-five foot height that we're asking to encroach into the, uh, maximum setback is only the tower itself, which comprises only fifteen percent of the total building. This is sixty foot in width. The building is four hundred foot in width. That comprises only fifteen percent of the entire width of the building. So we're not asking the entire building to be, um, eighty-five feet, just the central tower, which is flanked by the two wings, north and south. Okay? Um, so that will give you a perspective, two scales, surveyed, actual dimensions with the six-foot man standing at that intersection. Maybe that will help you get some perspective to it.
Can you address the parking variance?
Be glad to. Um, we, um, the city and the, uh, church, as I said, have entered into a disposition and development agreement. Uh, that was for the, um, two BLM parcels that the city has a lease on. That is this parcel here and the balance of the, uh, trailhead. We have a fifty-year parking agreement for both of these parcels. The lease that you have with the cit, with with BLM, um, will move to a patent, meaning a right of way guaranteed. It's done after we improve the park and the parking on both of these parcels. At that time, the city petitions BLM for a patent, which is permanent, just like the patents we're vacating here. They never go away until someone vacates them. But the the trigger is a completion of this park and parking. And of course, that's what we're planning to build with our project, so it will be completed at the time we complete our project.
I'm, I'm lost again.
Oh, okay. Well, let me back up with the variance that that we were requesting.
He asked about the parking, and you said something about provisional parking agreement. I don't, I don't know what that means.
Then maybe I should understand what the, what your request or your question was on the parking.
Is to allow a hundred and seventy-five spaces where three hundred and seventy-five are required. Tell me why we can't get to three hundred and seventy-five.
We have two hundred and seventy-five on this parcel, and we have one hundred on this parcel, a hundred and twenty on this parcel. We have three hundred and ninety-five available to us. I I was, I went too far ahead for you first, so I'll back up. We have three hundred and ninety-five available. We're required by the church seating of fifteen hundred to have three seventy-five. Code requires that we have, um, on-site, adjacent to the building, three hundred and seventy-five. So we have overflow parking that accounts for a hundred of that three seventy-five next door. That's the reason for the variance, is the parking is not on the campus proper.
So a short answer would be you have a shared parking agreement.
Yes, I started at the end. I shouldn't have. I should have started a little.
You're, I'm sorry, I'm, you're kind of losing me. And Mr. Patero, you've been doing this since God created that mountain. Maybe you can shed some light on, because I thought this was relatively simple, and I'm finding it more confusing as we go along.
And and if you could, I want, one of my questions is, why do we want to cut into a mountain that has a significant historic, uh, history to it? Why, why do we want to, like the neighbor say, why do you want to go up and disturb that?
Well, the s- the steepness of that site, we we have, and put it as far back to the flat section as possible. The cutting of this mountain is probably six, eight feet. And we're doing that to keep this building as far away from the, the intersection, and yet still maintaining the intent of the hillside ordinance, keeping it low. So the view to the mountain is not blocked, like the building just to the north of us. This building is the bank due north of us. There's another picture of it, that, um, would be the first thing that that gentleman views. This is across the street. That blocks the entire mountain. We want to keep it low. This was built before the hillside ordinance. Completely blocks the view. Ours does not. It's kept low. This is the bank across the street. That's from a little bit further away. Right, that's, in fact, that view is, uh, at the north line of the condos. At ground level.
Which at the north line of the condos, at ground level, you would see the church, you wouldn't see the middle, the mountain.
See this building.
Well, you see that building, but you'd see the church.
Right, at the intersection of of Cliff Shadows, that's what you would see. That's at the inter, I'm standing at the intersection right here, of Cliff Shadows and Novat.
So you're saying that's less in- intrusive on the mountain than than the bank is?
Basically, yes.
From that elevation.
Well, here we, well, I won't get into.
I will.
Ron, can you state your name and address?
Ron Patero, seven nine five eight Lookout Rock Circle, Las Vegas. Commissioner Evans, you're correct. I have been involved in this since two thousand and three. I was before this commission in Meddon Council when we first got our use permit, way back then. If I may, there are two issues to address, primarily the parking issue and the need for the overflow to the other side. I've been working with, uh, Robin Yocum and and planning staff, the councilman's office, for the last two and a half years on those other parcels, which we have acquired under a disposition and development agreement. And in exchange for developing them, we get to park there. And we have to park there for fifty years, and not only do we have the opportunity to get a patent at the end of that fifty years, or the city can, we have a right of purchase. Um, as soon as we build that park and that adjacent parking, we will have the opportunity to go in there, apply for patent from BLM, and actually own it.
No pun intended. Is this in concrete? I mean, this is for.
Yeah, we've signed, passed by the city council, um, in, actually, and and if I may, the date was January of this year. Took us two and a half plus years to get there, because the city's lease was delayed from the BLM for the Equestrian Park. So, um, that's in place because of the parking issue. So so we've got the disposition and development agreement. We have a requirement to spend the money to develop it, to have a place to park.
And you have an executed agree, I mean, everything's executed, parking executed, everything's done?
The the parking agreement has been signed by the city attorney's office.
Right here.
It's been, uh.
Well, does the city attorney, or has it been signed by the mayor, has it been approved by the council?
Before the council is part of, and I think I'm gonna have to defer to, I think, staff. Uh, Robin Yocum got it the other day, signed by pastor. So the city attorney signed off on it. We've signed off on it. It's going before council, I think, December seventeen.
Kind of what you're saying is, what we do doesn't mean a thing, here. I mean, staff doesn't mean a thing. These, these commissioners don't mean anything, because you've already worked it out with the council to finish the deal, and we're done.
No.
So I don't understand why you're here tonight asking for anything.
No, I have to, I have to.
We've talked about this property, the slope issues, the concerns about cutting into this mountain, when you came before us before. And of all of this time, there wasn't any inkling on on your part to even pick up the phone and say, hey, we're, this is coming back before the planning. We'd like to share it with you. We'd like to explain some of these complex things that we're asking about. So I I'm just curious why we're, why we're wasting time with this. It's already done.
I I believe, Commissioner, this is our first time before this commission with an SDR. We've not been before this commission with a plan showing building elevations, parking, uh, landscape requirements. This is our very first time. We've we've had, we had some discussion about this, and we've had, because of the the, uh, delay in getting the BLM lease to the city, we've been in here for extensions of our site development review several times.
Extensions of what site development review? We've never had a site development review.
Extensions to get in here. This is our first one. We've been extending the two-year, uh, site development review period that we have.
If I can, I can add this. In oh-three, we submitted a use permit that we did not have the site designed. We shared with the city our intent of this, and that was prior to the hillside ordinance. Um, what Ron is saying, subsequent to that, in two-year increments, they'd asked for extensions of time. This is the first formal, as I mentioned in my presentation, first formal submittal of the site design that we've made. We now have, um, all of the groundwork that Ron has been diligently working on in the last couple of years. The shared parking, the disposition and development agreement, uh, the easements, um, Pulte's, uh, design through to their project reverence. It has taken five years for us to get to this point, so we could present some.
I understand, I, Mr. Chair, through you, I, Mr. Patero, I I think I understand what you're saying, because I I didn't hear it quite that way. I do understand the frustration, but you're saying that this has been a long process.
Yes, it has.
You have an agreement, I think it's in the final stages, for some kind of shared parking agreement through the BLM that will provide sufficient parking, right?
Correct.
And I'm I'm looking at this, it's a, it's a modification, a major mod, uh, from the Longwell, uh, the Long Mountain Master Plan and then the Men's Land Use Plan, uh, somewhat, and then there's the rezoning from undeveloped, I think, uh, planned community development to, uh, planned development that would allow the church, I think.
No, we're, the church, five-acre parcel itself is already done on the major mod in two thousand and three and the special use permit. We are talking about the ancillary parcels that that we're bringing in under the DDA with the BLM.
Okay.
So so that there's conformance with all the parcels when you add them all together for a site.
The site plan is for a part, part of that is for the, the height of the spire within the, within the church. Oh, right. And I, and I just, I know there's some details here that need to be worked out. Uh, and I'm not entirely sure what all the concerns are, so I'd like to reserve my judgment. But I did want to say about the architecture, if you compare this submittal and the way that you've worked with the site versus the one that you showed with the bank, another application and other, someone else's work. One looks like it's been put on the site, and your application looks like it's been integrated into the site. And there may be some details, I think, when you're talking about the the, uh, the site disturbance. Because this, when we created the hillside ordinance, it, I'm assuming there's some parameters there. It says, your application is to allow a site disturbance of three point seven eight acres, where three point five six is the maximum permitted on roughly five acres. So in my mind, that's a relatively small percentage of the deviation from the code. Um, so the parking, from my mind, unless there's something I'm missing, I'm comfortable with your your app, your answer to that. So I guess where I'm, where I need to back up is the issues, are the issues that people don't want this development here? Or, because if, I'm looking at the bank, the, or whatever that white building is that you showed me. Literally, it sits in front of the mountain. It looks like it was plopped there. Your application, in my mind, and granted, I'm a neophyte, but I've studied architecture up one side and down the other, is absolutely the correct way to build into a hillside. And in my mind, I think that takes some skill, and it's aesthetically a a whole lot better than the other way. That having been said, I'm curious about, you know, because I know we've had discussions in the community about how do we develop the hillsides? Do we want to? Who owns that land? And at some point, how is it to be developed? So those, I guess, would be the framework of my questions for my.
And I would, and I would make one other point, and then I'll give it back to Mark. We started this in two thousand and three, long before there was a hillside ordinance. The vision list, as Pastor has explained, has been there since day one. The hillside ordinance, if I'm not mistaken, was passed in August of two thousand and seven. In essence, related to our five years of planning, the hillside ordinance is somewhat of a Johnny come lately. As we've been seventy percent into our timeline over these five years, now comes the hillside ordinance. It's kind of a, well, it's a deviation in a monkey wrench to where we've been, how we've been designing, how we've been planning, how we've been talking to staff. And we know the denial is based upon code. They have to do that. But 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 our plan and our vision has been consistent, consistent since day one. And so I just want to make that clear, that the hillside ordinance is somewhat at the end and tail end of our design and planning as we're before you today. And I think that's a significant.
But but I think what's important, it's one of the things that Commissioner Evans always comes back to say is 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 how come we don't follow? We put all these ordinances and and things in place, and granted, you said you you had this vision way before the hillside ordinance. But there is a ordinance here, and that's why it's got a denial on it, because it's not meeting, meeting the ordinance. But then what it's gonna do to, for us, is it's gonna set precedent. And so that's what we have to look at, what may come here and in the future. And then, next thing we know, is everybody wants to come and dig a floor into the mountain and and show their vision. So that's the problem I have toying with, is if we've got a hillside ordinance, and it says a building can only be to a certain height, then I think you may want to stick to that height. Now, I understand the pastor says, you know, the tall building to come and pray. We could debate that all all day. Martin Luther King said he had a dream, and he saw the mountaintop, and he even saw on the other side, and it wasn't through an eighty-five foot tower. It was, it was through prayer. And so, um, do we need to, are you giving us a a justification to deviate from the hillside ordinance? And and you have to make that compelling case of why you think it's justified to go beyond that that height limitation?
And that, and that's a fair statement. And again, I I would use the timeline, how long we've been in the process. And and I would also say that we're a church. We're not a commercial operation. We're not a residential operation. We're not an industrial operation. And if you look at the number of churches in this town relative to the number of potential applications that can come in, poquito, very small percentage of applications wanting to build up, above the thirty-five foot line, are gonna come in, because there aren't that many churches doing what we're doing. So, you know, not as a response to us setting a precedent. Churches, they have somewhat of a different character, a different architectural history. And I think that's part of why we have, why we think we have a compelling argument to ask for this variance, along from the fact that we've been at this for seventy percent of our timeline when the hillside ordinance came into play. So I leave it at that.
And some churches end up, over a period of time, being. And some churches end up, over a period of time, being part of history as well, because they tend to stand forever.
Yeah, that's correct.
Pastor, and then I'll ask for any more comments and questions from the board.
Thank you, Chairman. I think one of the things that we, really in our heart, is to become a landmark in our city. And you're right, it does stand out, and this is why we're asking for a variance, because it is a landmark that will draw attention from around the world. I'm not sure if you know very much about the history of our church, but we've, we've filled up Thomas and Mack one time, we've Cashman Field with Evander Holyfield, we cooperated with him.
Pastor, I, I'm sure you run a great church. We're not supposed to look at what kind of church and how great you run it when we make a decision.
I understand.
I have no concern about that.
I just...
I think you maybe should serve your, save your sermon for...
Yeah.
Mr. Petaro, make your sermon, and you can save souls.
My point is, in two sentences then, I appreciate that comment.
They have opportunity to get on that.
Yes, I understand that. Yeah, there you go, there you go.
Vice Chairman Trobryd?
Yes, I've got a, a couple of concerns here that are probably very, very basic. One, we've got the neighbors out there, we've got, in some of the items you're requesting, 10 protests, and some of the others, we have 12 protests. I think that the residents out there have a feeling about the project, and the fact that they're protesting lets us know how they feel about it. The fact that they exist, and that one of the residents came up, and this is the first time they'd seen the rendering, lets me feel that perhaps we haven't done the world's best job of having a public hearing out there. Whether it was advertised, and there was no one in the neighborhood because of the thousand-foot rule or whatever, that's understandable. But I think now we've given it enough floor time, that I think the public is informed that the significant structure is going to be, is being proposed out there, and we're taking that into consideration. So, I think we're in need of a public hearing to resolve some of the neighbors' concerns out there. I think to start off on the wrong foot is a bad idea. I think we went, need to win these people over. When it comes to seeing the renderings, I think we've, we've had a lot of confusion as to the numbers on the, on the particular drawing, whether it's 184 or 84 or whatever. I also find some of the renderings that have the north of the project shown to the left, and other times the north of the project is shown to the top, and I can't tell where on the world 215 is when I get them all twisted around there. I need something that shows me where a particular project is, and maybe a topo that shows the mountain. Who owns the mountain? You know, do you actually own it, or is this part of the BLM lease? I would like to know where that bank is in proximity of the church. You know, if, if that is already blocking the view, and you're really nestled between the bank and the mountain, then all of a sudden, the argument about it's blocking our view of the mountain sort of goes away because the bank has already done the job. You know, I, I see those things being a concern. I found out for the first time this evening that the, you achieved the parking requirement as a result of a joint use agreement with the city, which also requires the development of a park on BLM land and a 50-year lease, which you've got an agreement that you're going to buy. I, it's been eight years, but I used to know BLM rules pretty well, and that doesn't sound like the way they used to do it. Maybe they've changed it, maybe the federal government's become more liberal, I don't know. Generally, it doesn't work that way, though. So, I, I don't know about that part. You know, the, the accessibility of the parishioners to the, to the church across a street that's going to be developed at what point in time? You know, there's just, there's just a lot of confusion that's come up tonight. I think this is a significant enough of a project, and it's gone on long enough, but a little bit of a delay's not gonna kill us, and I think the entire project and public support might be generated by a little more discussion, a little more presentations, and talking with the people around there. When you go to developing your congregation, I'm sure you're gonna work on the local residents, and it sure would be nice to use this as an opportunity to do an outreach and show them how receptive you are to input, and how you do want to be a positive member of the community out there. So, that is my feeling, and I'm sure there's others that have similar types of thoughts about that.
Commissioner, can I address any of those concerns? Because you've listed them, and I, I hope I got them all. And, and they're in the order that I heard them, and it may be different than the way you presented them, but the property owner, the property owner of the parcel that the campus sits on, this parcel here is owned by the church. North is that way.
North is to the left this time, okay.
And the beltway is right here. Okay? The church owns this property. It is landlocked, and, and that is the reason of, the length of time it's taken to develop the disposition and development agreement, to provide us access so we could develop it. It is, as you point out, quite a lengthy process to work with the BLM. Ron, myself, and BLM have worked on the easements for quite some time, Ron for the longest of times, to get that to this point we're at now. So, that's the property owner. The bank location, this parcel right here, this building sits right here.
Before we get away, that left, the parts being covered up by your rendering, are you quoting that?
This, what are we looking at here?
Yes, right underneath that thing. There you go, that part right there. That's owned by whom?
This is the BLM parcel right here, that is the La Madre Equestrian Trailhead that is just recently completed.
Okay, and where do the equestrian fit in?
This is the equestrian right here. Let me show the landscape, maybe that'll help a little bit. Okay, now, here, let me put it in this orientation so I don't confuse it. North this way, this is the equestrian trailhead, this is that little parcel that you were just referring to. That was left over from this development and agreed within the DDA for the church to build this out and complete it, that remainder portion.
Is the equestrian trailhead, is it built, is it in place?
It's just completed.
Beautiful.
It's within the last month or so. Just completed. So, this is all in, the equestrian trail goes up through the mountains, continues on.
Okay, I remember the old plan.
So, that's that parcel there, which is that one. The bank location, that bank that was in this picture right here is right here. Just due north of us, on, on this parcel right here. The neighborhood meeting, we sent out 600 notices, I'm not sure, I...
Did you do that through the city?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
We had a neighborhood meeting last Wednesday at the Durango Hills YMCA. We had four people, five people show up, we answered all their questions, we showed them the renderings, they thought it was beautiful. Tonight was the first time we met this gentleman. We'd heard, we saw that the protests were there, but we don't, we don't know what their protest was. Two of them were out of state, a couple of them were not in this area, in the zip code, and a couple more, we believe, were in the condos. So, that's the reason we wanted to take these pictures of the banks to show the relationship with the view they're having now, and we're trying to, as Commissioner Evans says, is trying to work with the environment, not against it. So, we have done our outreach and, and had a, had a good turnout, and they liked what they saw at that, at that neighborhood meeting.
Right, quick, let me just read a couple. You didn't hear about any of the oppositions.
Well, there was about seven we saw on the report.
About nine. One just says, "Five-story, huge building, goes too far beyond the established zoning regulations, would create too much traffic when used. We don't need an arena-type facility up here, way too high for this area." So, that's some of what the opposition that seems to be coming in.
We assumed it was the height, and that's why we wanted to point out that it is only the tower is encroaching into that 35-foot height restriction. The rest of the building is within, it was within that required space. So, and that again, is only 15% of the total width of the building.
Nate, very quickly, our property going up the mountain, which would be this property back here, to address the commissioner's concern, we're blocking our own view of our own land. In terms of our tower, if you look at, if you can see where we are here, our tower, this is the end of our land going up the mountain. So, in essence, we're not blocking the public view of public lands, we're blocking our own view of our own land, just by way of letting you know whose land it is we're blocking.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and I don't mean to interrupt anyone, but the, I, I'm inclined to agree with your assessments, because the way the application is presented and the way that legally we would have to notice it would be for a proposed five-story, 85, 89,000-square-foot church house of worship. And if I got that, I would think that somewhere near my home is gonna be a five-story building. The fact is, you're integrating it into the mountain, so the, there really is no view to be blocked. If we have agreed that we are going to develop our hillsides to an extent, I, I think this is the kind of application that we need. If it were a big box store of some sort, I, you know, with no architectural integrity, I might have a very different view, but I'm thinking of the LDS temple out there on Sunrise Mountain, it's a beautiful structure. It's visible from all over the valley when it's illuminated. When I lived in Washington DC, the National Cathedral is the largest structure, I believe, in the, in the greater Washington metropolitan area. It sits out like a landmark, it's a beautiful structure. I think you're developing a project and integrating it into the hillside, it's not blocking anyone's views, and there may be some issues, and I would take my cues from my fellow commissioners who live out there, but it sounds like you've done your due diligence. I think architecturally, it's a very outstanding project. You've satisfied to some degree anyway, unless I'm missing something, the parking issue. I'm not sure what's left, except for the chairman's statement, and I would be inclined to agree with him about, you know, using my own analogies where we chip away at our own ordinances, but I notice that this is a very, very, very minor deviation from our code. So, I'm not sure where, I'm just trying to speculate where all the confusion and, and heartburn comes in this application, because architecturally, I think it's pretty outstanding. The way it's oriented on the mountain, on the hillside, I think is pretty outstanding. And I'm just not real clear where all of the objection to this would be coming from. Someone, maybe someone can enlighten me briefly. Please don't speak as long as I do.
Mr. Truesdale, then Commissioner Steinman.
Because, you know, I, I do hear what Commissioner Evans has, has raised, is a, you know, a feeling that this building does address our hillside ordinance, but we get criticized too many times for not sticking with the master plans, because we try to look beyond what's there and what, what's compatible, what's appropriate. And if this was a building that came in and met our hillside ordinance and, and was looking for a, a variance of 10 feet up beyond the height, this is almost, our ordinance and the height, or height restriction is 35 feet. This is not an incidental change. This is a, this is going from 35 feet to 85 feet. That's, it's more than double what our current standards are. I understand your vision. Your vision is not my vision of what I want to see along the mountains in Las Vegas. And I believe that the residents as a whole have concerns about what they're, where does, where do we stop when we look at the mountains? Where do we, Mr. Terrell points out that you guys own the mountain.
Part of it.
You own part of it, but you don't own all the mountains. You don't own all of you, you don't own everything that I have to get up and look at in the morning. I don't believe this building will be invisible to people, I don't believe it'll blend in with the architecture of the mountain so wonderfully that when you're riding your horse at that trailhead, you won't be overwhelmed by a five-story, 89,000-square-foot structure that's about the size of a Walmart and five floors high. And the parking trap, the parking ingress, egress competing with that Walmart or that, with that trailhead will be dramatic. And when you speak about the National Cathedral in Washington and the LDS temple on the east side of the valley, those are not cut into the mountain, climbed up the mountain, the National Cathedral sits right in the middle of an urban center. If this was in the middle of this community, I would, I'd be your biggest supporter, as long as it met all the other things. But we're, we're looking at this mountain, we're looking at the hillside here, we're looking at a dominant feature on our west side of our valley, and one of the few dominant hillsides within the city, and our first application is to cut right into it and, and put this significant building. And this is, this is not an insignificant building, this is a large structure. And I think without more information, I mean, the plans you submitted, I have some questions. I'd like to see elevations and cut, and sections to show where you're cutting into the mountain, I think that would be a little more demonstration. Doesn't mean I would support your 85, but with what's before us tonight, I, I really have a concern, and I looked at this parking agreement that was part of our additional backup, and there's no guarantee that the parking will be there. So, if, if something happens with that parking agreement and we, we go for this waiver, that means we could have 100 and plus cars parking up and down Clishadale Parkway, filling up the trailhead on a Sunday, probably using that bank parking lot across the street that, and when we get down to a public safety issue, what happens when the first, this parkway that you hope, Desert Hope or whatever, I don't know what the name of, where Navat goes in to this Pulte development, will carry significant traffic? And a remote parking lot for people coming on Sundays or, or seven days a week, whatever days you have your services, because I suspect you, you plan to have multiple services multiple days of the week. I just think we're putting a big facility there with a lot of traffic, and I can tell you that, as much as we're concerned in this community about people being hit in pedestrian crosswalks, I would hate to see us have a church there, I mean, with a remote parking lot, and one of your parishioners, one of the children of your family, one of your church families get hit by a car because they think it's a safe street, going, because they're going to their church. Those are legitimate concerns, and I don't think they've been addressed. And the shared agreement talks about park, all I see is a green, green place. I, I don't see much park, but I see a lot of parking. So, if the city, the residents of Las Vegas are committing to your facility as a, and thinking they're getting a park, I think they're getting a, some, a little bit of green area, not much use of a park, but we get a big parking lot. So, with all of those concerns, unless there's some dramatic answer, unless there's a, an overriding factor that needs to be addressed tonight, I would like to hold this for 30 days or 60 days. One, to have the applicant try another public meeting, I'd like to see the plans revised to reflect true heights and elevations, I'd like to see the sections, cross-sections of the building, so Commissioner Evans might understand what cutting into that mountain means. To me, it means we're gonna be blasting in the side of that mountain for the development of this church facility. That doesn't really work, at least I don't think it works if I lived in one of those buildings, if I was a senior citizen living in Sun City, and I know that the, the mountain across the freeway from me is gonna be blasted. These are all real concerns that I don't think were answered very clearly to where we're at tonight.
Commissioner, if I may...
Commissioner Evans?
You're asking them to hold another public hearing, and they're telling me that they held one, notified 600 people, and five people showed up. Would you suggest that the notice area be increased, or, I, I'm not sure what, I, I would respect your agreement to hold it, but it sounds like you don't like the project, and I don't know what holding it's gonna do, other than maybe the same five people come out.
Well, I think the notice area, Commissioner Evans, on this one, it was 504 people noticed in the area, so...
There's, there's close, there's supposed to be close to 4,000 people living Mountains Edge, I mean, not Mountains Edge, I mean, Clishadows, or the planned community out there. This is such a dominant facility within that planned community, would you want to notice people west of the freeway?
Well, we, we got the, the only person that we did get was none of the people that were noticed, it was from the HOA for the single-family detached homes to the north of the condos, and they sent the president, and she liked the project. So, I have to agree with Commissioner Evans. It serves no purpose for us to hold it again, we've done the due diligence, we've met with the owners, the, in the neighborhood.
If Commissioner, if Commissioner Truesdale, your intention is to broaden the base of the stakeholders, I'd... I'd be willing to support that.
I mean, at this point, were notices sent to people within Sun City, Summerlin? I haven't heard from Commissioner Steinman yet.
Just some folks to the west. I was looking at the map, there are some residents to the east, if we went back and expanded that notification, we may pick up another 300, 400 folks on a notification.
And I can't imagine the applicant, I mean, obviously, the pastor is interested in reaching out to everybody he can, so I can't imagine holding a, another meeting with, broadening the notice area would create any hurdles for anyone.
The planning we've done to this date is, there's no purpose for us. We'd rather have denial and let us move on. If you're against the project, I don't know that noticing more people will make that change of heart for you. I think the project has been designed, we're very proud of it. I think it addresses the concerns. The concerns that you bring up are already addressed, the accessibilities, the parking agreements, we have.
Parking agreement right here says that it's not exclusive and is not guaranteed. So you're asking for a greater variance than what is noticed already, and that creates enough of a hardship that I think we would be inappropriate in passing without getting some answer to that. And I got that this evening, it wasn't in my backup before tonight's meeting. And I appreciate that Mr. Carroll knows his game very well, and, you know, he does this a lot. Hence, you've got one little parcel already slipped through the master plan, and that way you're coming back and saying, well, we haven't been back before you. Unless my fellow commissioners have a real excitement about doing this, I'd like to make a motion to hold this for 60 days. With the requirement of holding a public meeting, expanding the notice area to include portions of Sun City and the primary residence west of Beltway that are in Cliff Shadows, that, or, yeah, Cliff Shadows, that are affected by this. They're affected by the traffic, they're affected by everything else. So that's my motion, unless somebody else has another comment.
Comments or questions?
I think Commissioner Steinman had a couple of comments, and then we'll come back to the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. I do live in Sun City. I live about two miles from this particular site. I am on the board of the Sun City Summerlin Association, and it does affect a few of our residents who have been noticed here. I look upon this site as a part of the southwest quadrant of this Cheyenne 215 interchange. And when you have a quadrant, and trying to develop a quadrant, it's a very difficult process to do. And I think it's amazing what you've come up with. And I would tell my fellow commissioners, if you haven't been out to see the trailhead park, you need to see this. It is very unique, there's nothing like it in the city of Las Vegas, and I'm not sure in the valley. And it's a very, something the city's very proud of, I'm sure. When I go out there and I look, if you take a look at the picture that's on the screen to the left, you'll see the ugliest power lines that were ever created in the world. They are on this site, basically, and they're a mess. And that's what people should be concerned about, messing up their view of the mountain. When I first looked at this building, no offense, Pastor, but I saw an office building. I did. And I've heard you tonight, and I look at it in a different light than I originally did, but it is a mess. And I think the only thing that concerns me about the building probably is the tower, and I understand your feeling about the tower. And if we can come to some mid-ground there, I would feel a lot better about the situation. But I like this project. I think it's right. I think it's a proper use on that quadrant. But if we're going to have another meeting and expand the area, my suggestion is that we expand up Cliff Shadows. Those are the people that are going to see this project every day as they come out of that area. Not necessarily all of my constituents over in Sun City, who will, yeah, they'll hear the blasting, as Mr. Truesdale pointed out, but I think the people up Cliff Shadows are the ones that are important. I do agree with Commissioner Truesdale about parking across this street. That is going to be a well-used street someday. Luckily, they've held off that development until 2010, and we're not concerned about it today, but I think at some point, 200 people crossing that street with the traffic coming out of reverence is going to be an interesting factor there, and you're going to have to do something about it. So I'll go along with the delay if it means that we inform the right people. And I think the right people are up Cliff Shadows, and that's where we need to go on this thing. And if you want to inform more of the people in Sun City, that's fine, too. I don't think they're as affected as much seeing this as the people over in Lone Mountain. So that would be my comment.
If I could ask, we would rather not have the delay. Again, we had, if I look at this picture again, going north, we went as far as a mile and a half north to those single-family residents in our neighborhood meeting. The president of the homeowners association up on Cliff Shadows was there. She liked the project. We expand the notice zone, we are not, we're not doing anything but delaying.
You already, you already went a mile north.
Yes.
Did you go into Sun City deeper or anything like that? You just, you went more into Lone Mountain?
We went, yeah, we went into the Lone Mountain master plan, and we had their input. The president of the association was there. I obviously know she's spoken to her, she said she was going to. They aren't here today. I think she, the impression we got was when we left that meeting, she really liked the project, she saw what we were doing, we incorporated it into the mountain, we're trying to be, you know, sensitive to the hillside ordinance, with the exception of the one small portion of the tower. Granted, it is into the prohibited space, but it's in 15% of the overall width. We think we've done our homework. There's no, I don't know that I will convince Commissioner Truesdale ever that this is a good project. As you pointed out, this is the view we have now.
I think you made your point.
Yeah.
So we would rather just move forward.
I know you'd rather get a denial and move forward, but I want to respect my commissioner here who has some valid concerns.
We have a motion up to hold this for 60 days, and as part of that motion, the request through Commissioner Truesdale was to expand the notice area and conduct another neighborhood meeting. Now, the expansion to the notice area, do we want to go further west into Cliff Shadows? Because there are some residents that we could go further west. There's also some residents to the east that we could expand the notification area as well, and we can include the Sun City Summerlin, so.
And I'm not looking to have a meeting just to hopefully rattle up a bunch of people. That's not it. But I, when you say one president of an association came, there's multiple associations throughout the Cliff Shadows community, because each one of those little ones have an association. So one person coming from one small condo project or, you know, that may have 80 units isn't, you know, the end-all speaker for that community. I think if we went through Long Cliff Shadows, north to, I want to say it's Lone Mountain, that's a primary housing west of the Beltway that is affected. Those people drive by this corner every day, and that, you know, I mentioned the Sun City because I know that they are east of it and they look at that mountain, you know, whatever effect that has on them.
That's their view.
You know, but.
This is what is north of our project, along the freeway. Again, another one just north of our project on the freeway.
Well, if you're going to have your own meeting, I'd like to just have a vote on the motion we have before us to hold it. You can have your own meeting after this by yourself, that'd be fine.
Is there a reason we have 60 days?
The holidays? Why hold a public meeting in the middle of Christmas when no one shows?
There's a motion on the floor to hold items 29 through 34 for 60-day, which would be to the January 21st, 2009 Planning Commission meeting. Motion on the floor, cast your vote. That would be January 22nd, '09 Planning Commission meeting. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
Mr. Chairman.
Lewis?
I would just ask that we be real clear about where this commission expects the notice area, what the notice area is going to include.
Yes, that's what I'm, I'm looking at the map.
North to the primary arterioles of the north.
North to the lone mountain.
North to Lone Mountain, got it.
Both sides of Cliff Shadows.
Okay, very good.
Can I, will the city make that notification, or do you expect us to, do you want us to?
Go through the usual neighborhood meeting process.
So we'll go through the city.
We want to thank you for taking the time tonight to hear our appeal. Appreciate that.
Yeah, we'll take a break for about 10 minutes here.
Praise the Lord.
We'd like to call the meeting back to order. We're going to begin with item 35. Item 35 is VAR 30690, applicant owner, Rouhani Family Trust, to allow for a proposed 40-foot freestanding sign to have a two-foot setback where five feet is the minimum required at 625 North Lamb. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the adjacent residentially zoned parcel to the north and the location of the proposed sign is designated within the general plan as service commercial. Therefore, staff can support the proposed variance as the reduction report setback will have a negligible effect on the adjacent property. Please note additional letters of protest have been received. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Starr?
Ms. Starr, 3753 Howard Hughes Parkway, representing the applicant. As staff has pointed out, this is really the only location for us to have a sign. The owner of this shopping center actually had a monument sign on the site previously, but due to the fact the landscaping along the side of the building on the lamb frontage is higher than the street elevation, the bottom half of that monument sign was blocked by the required shrubs in the landscape platter, and the top of the monument sign was blocked by the lowest branches on the required trees in the landscape platter. So he was left with very little view for his tenants from traffic passing on lamb. So that monument sign was removed about a month ago in anticipation of building this sign, which would actually give some visibility to his tenants. As staff has noted in their report, the square footage we're requesting is less than what is allowable by code. Our setbacks from the actual residences that exist on the east side is greater than what is required by code. The sign itself, the stone column supporting the sign is the same color to match the vertical elements on the building, and the casing on the sign is the accent color used on the building. So we think it will blend very well with the development on the site, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody like to speak for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions by the board? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion on item 35.
In regards to variance 30690, make a recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 35, please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 36, RQR 30321, applicant Clear Channel Outdoor, owner Kenneth A. and Don Lee Simpkins for a 40-foot tall, 12-foot by 24-foot off-premise sign billboard at 1323 South Main Street. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, this off-premise sign has not received its final inspection. As such, staff recommends denial of the review. Please note additional protests have been received.
Mr. Chairman, abstaining on signing as much as I own property within the notice area.
Good evening, Rod Carter, 288 Mead Avenue, on behalf of Clear Channel Outdoor. We have our letter from our certified engineer to take care of that problem, and I humbly request your approval moving forward.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, and I'd like to speak for or against this item, please come forward.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 18th Street. I wanted to know if they're keeping it nice and clean.
Close the public hearing. Mr. Carter, would you like to speak to that?
Spick and span this one.
It is clean.
Yeah, this one's clean.
Staff concurs.
Director Wheeler?
Applicant, has that letter been submitted to the building department?
It will be, I just received it. So again, I have it right here for review.
Any comments and questions on item 36 by members of the commission? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
In regards to item 2, required review 30321, make a recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 36, please cast your vote. And that motion has passed with Commissioner Truesdale abstaining.
Council on 12/17.
Thank you. Item 37, RQR 30592, applicant Clear Channel Outdoor, owner Jay and Denise Harrison Family Trust, to allow a 40-foot tall, 14-by-48-foot off-premise sign billboard located 265 feet from an existing off-premise sign billboard, signed where 300 feet is the minimum distance separation required at 5301 West Charleston Boulevard. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, since the approval of this original sign, a residential project has been approved adjacent to this parcel. As such, staff finds that this is a major change in the area and is recommending denial. Please note additional protests have been received.
Thank you. Applicant?
Good evening, Rod Carter, on behalf of Clear Channel Outdoor. You know, the sign's got a final inspection, we're doing everything to keep it up. Humbly ask for your approval moving forward.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak for or against this item, please come forward.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, again. I'd like to ask the staff, has this a residential project, has it been started?
It has not.
Well, then, I would suggest then that maybe you could, to extend the two-year until they get started on that residential, which they approved.
Seeing no more, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions on item 37? If not, we'll entertain a motion on item 37.
I'm ready to make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Quinn?
I'm ready to make a motion if anybody else wants to. RQR 30592, to approve of the two-year review with all staff's recommendations.
Cannot be two years.
Two, three, I'm sorry, three years, I meant three.
Three-year review.
I meant three, sorry.
Okay. Motion's on the floor with a three-year review, please cast your vote. Your yes vote is for the approval of item 37. That motion has passed. Item 38.
Council on December 17.
Thank you.
Item 38, SUP 30343, applicant New Cellular Wireless, owner Smoke Ranch Center Equity Partners LLC for a proposed 70-foot tall wireless communication facility stealth, designed monopole, 6,000 Smoke Ranch Road. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the subject property has an existing 50-foot tall wireless communication facility stealth design mono flag, occupying two parking spaces approximately 42 feet north of the proposed cell tower location, and has recently received approval to allow three rooftop-mounted antennas at a height of 42 feet on top of the existing two-story commercial building on the site. The addition of a 70-foot monopole to the site will precipitate the oversaturation of wireless communication facilities within the immediate area, as well as have a visual impact on the single-family residences to the north. Therefore, staff has recommended denial of this application. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner John Wright for the applicant, New Singular Wireless is actually the carrier involved. I've been involved in this project for about eight months in an attempt to find a landlord, which is, you all know, is always the first step when we get a circle on a map by the RF engineer to either fill a hole in the system or to offload traffic from another site that is carrying too much traffic and is blocking calls. This particular search ring, Smoke Ranch, and Jones has been of particular interest for this carrier for some time, and until recently, we're unsuccessful in obtaining a lease. This subject parcel, we avoided it, actually, I avoided it, because there was an existing tower on the parcel, and it was a tower that was not suitable for co-location for this carrier because of the height and because of the need for at least six antennas for the services that New Singular Wireless, now known as AT&amp;T Mobility. So just not to be confused, it is the same entity. They need to have two antennas per sector, which is a total of six antennas, because they are running technologies of GSM and UMTS, which is basically licenses that they have bought from the FCC to roll out that technology. Each of them, they don't have an antenna that can handle both the traffic and the both different frequencies in one antenna. So height is always an issue, as you all well know, where before you. Where before you originally as an eighty-foot application, my planner, John Schumacher, was very instrumental in helping me through this process, and at one point, he sent an email notifying me that there was an airport overlay issue that we did not realize that there was. So I went to the RF engineer involved and asked him, can he live with a seventy-foot pole? He said he could live with a seventy-foot pole, which is gonna give him a center line of his antenna of about sixty-two feet. So in discussing with the team how to design the pole on this parcel and where to put it on the parcel, obviously, there's an existing pole just due north of where we're proposing to go. Again, it's a slimline canister flagpole. There's not adequate space, there's not adequate height for co-location, and even if we were to be able to live with the height to go below it, we couldn't do that because we have to have two antennas per sector and they don't fit inside the canister. So we discussed the possibility of another pole. And if I might paraphrase Commissioner Evans, if you haven't done something right in the past, why not do it right the next time by allowing a structurally-built pole that can accommodate multiple carriers to eliminate the need for multiple poles? There are seven licensed carriers in the valley right now. Those are only the licensed ones. There are probably half a dozen unlicensed Wi-Fi companies that are out seeking space, whether it's on towers or on rooftops. There's two carriers, there was one carrier accounted for. When we started this process, we all know about the Nextel. That is Sprint and Nextel, they're now one company. I found out about the other carrier when I read the staff report. I called the landlord today and asked him, and that is Cricket, who has developed the three antennas on the rooftop. I know of, we submitted a letter of support from T-Mobile. T-Mobile has the exact same search ring, wants a site in the exact same area. They hired us to go find it, but we were already finding it on behalf of AT&amp;T, so we said, wait on AT&amp;T and you would be able to co-locate. We also know that Horvath Towers, which is a build-to-suit tower company, came and attempted to put a tower on the convenience store on the parcel directly west of us. And I think they submitted for zoning application, were initially declined administrative review, and they gave up and left. And they had, I can't name the name of the carrier because I don't represent them, but they were gonna have T-Mobile and another carrier on that pole. So we have of the seven licensed carriers in Vegas, we know two are currently gonna be on the parcel, leaving five, of which I know there's three that need that corner right now. So we have three people like me out there beating the streets, trying to get leases, trying to find a spot to build a tower. And so my proposal is to build one pole that's gonna accommodate both structurally and antenna and coax on one, on one structure. Because I'm not the first, I'm not the last guy you're gonna see attacking this particular corner. So that being said, we reduced the size to seventy-foot. Now, to increase that height, there would be another special use permit application with some FAA considerations. We can build our poles structurally to just extend. We can build a pine tree to extend. So that if another carrier came along and couldn't live with a height below us where we are, could only live with height above us, well, fine, you go zone it, you go get the airport authority, but we'll build it so you structurally, we know you can do that ahead of time. As opposed to having a slimline pole that is not built to extend, the foundation is not built to extend, the steel is not built to extend, and it won't allow the number of antennas that at least three carriers require for things that they're building right now. So again, it's not, there is no perfect spot for a cell tower. I've been before bodies like yourself many times, and I know the answer to that. This particular corner, I was looking at it on Live Search, preparing for this meeting. Live Search gives you the opportunity to do an angle view, it's a Microsoft, it's kinda like a satellite, but you can drop down and look at it at an angle. The parcels south of the street is a multifamily, and they have a number of fairly large trees, like two or three large trees, fronting what is Smoke Ranch, between them is Smoke Ranch. It's not a shield, but they have a number of large trees. They're more of a broadleaf. It's not a pine, it's not a palm. The parcel to the west is the gas station, and if you look at the photo simulation that was provided, and I would like to note that the photo simulation provided was an eighty-foot pole. The change down to seventy came after that, and I was remiss in getting that photo sim revised down ten feet. So if you've seen the photo sim in your file, that is ten feet taller than we're actually asking for. This is a, yeah, this is the design, this is not the photo sim. I have it on my computer, but I did not print it out.
You knew Las Vegas?
Excuse me?
You knew Las Vegas?
Four years, I've been here.
Okay. Okay. Let me go ahead and open this up for, for public hearing, because I think we need to quickly get to the question and answer. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wants to speak for or against this item, please come forward.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. My thing is this, the city needs money, the schools need money. Isn't there a school or a fire station or someplace around here that we can...
That's why I asked him, when he said, when he said to the west, there's a convenience store, I was gonna say, and if you go past the alley and the car wash, there's a big ball field called Friendly High School with plenty of poles that are probably about a hundred feet up in the air now. And they're crying for revenue.
And there's a city fire station about a half mile.
That's my thing.
I'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Farlow.
Comments or questions from the board? And we're sincere about that. We don't understand why these, right across the street, you have an opportunity with a, with a, with a school field, with lights that are already in place. I don't know why these cell companies can't come up with some type of attachment or reconstruction of a pole on a ball field on a school park and put it in there.
I can, I can answer that as best I can. In the four years I've been here, at one time, we were able to make application. Clark County Schools requires that you apply for five schools at one time, and they require deposit. And when I was here with Singu, the old Singular Wireless, four years ago, between two-hundred-and-sixty sites that we had designed on the board at the time, and all the different contractors like myself, they pulled us all in a room and said, okay, we think we have an avenue in with Clark County Schools. We've been trying this a long time. To get the grids to match in particular sites, at that time, we came up with four. Clark County will not accept less than five. So we're designing, the engineers are designing these sites, and they're to mesh with the system. If, if a school is a quarter mile from an existing tower, it's great that the school is there, but it's like putting two sprinklers side by side in your yard. You're not maximizing your investment, you're throwing your money away on building the tower, which is extremely expensive. I was before this board, probably six or eight months ago, and, and you made the same point to me, and it's a point very well made, and I would love for somebody to tell me who, at Clark County School, would accept my application, because we're not able to.
Had showed up last night at Chaparral High School with seven-hundred-and-fifty screaming parents about money, and you walked in and said, I'm from the cell company, and I can give you all upwards of twenty or thirty thousand dollars a month if you let me put my antenna on your ball field. They probably would've paraded you down Las Vegas Boulevard like you were the king.
I appreciate what you're saying, but that's not the administration, that's not the folks that actually accept.
Well, I think it may be time to go back to them again. It seems like this has been a while since this proposal, and I think they may be open, open to it. So...
Their purse strings might be a little tighter.
Mr. Chairman, if I can...
Mr. Evans?
I, just a couple of quick comments. You make some interesting points, although I still can't wrap my mind around some of these cell towers that are purported to look like trees that, for whatever reason, no one thinks they look like a tree. Unless maybe you were to integrate them within a bunch of existing trees where it was kind of blended in, but when they stick out like this, I'm looking at the, what's up on the screen right now, and those don't look like trees. They, I don't know what they look like, wolverines or something, but... But I do appreciate the effort, but my other concern, and again, I, I don't mean to, to beat a horse, but I'm looking at the application, and you said that you've been involved with this for about eight months. When you applied for this special use permit, the city goes out and takes these pictures, and I'm looking at all the graffiti on your, on your cell tower, the little buildings surrounding it, and I'm assuming that's your property.
No, that, that actually belongs to Sprint Nextel.
That's Sprint.
Yeah, we don't have a facility there yet as AT&amp;T.
So that's not you.
That is not us.
Good point. And it's been painted over.
And I did speak...
Well, it wasn't when the application was made.
Right. And I did speak with the landlord this morning, because I read staff report, and there were some concerns about the condition of the property. I called and spoke to the property manager, as well as the owner, and told them both, they're saying you don't have trees in place. They're saying that the wall of the existing facility has graffiti, which is a pandemic not only to cell towers, but to the city as well. And this gentleman has recently purchased a building and spent a lot of money on landscaping and restriped the building, excuse me, the parking lot, he says today, that contractors were supposed to be out there. So he is taking some pride in the way the building looks and is attempting...
So that's not your property?
No, sir, we don't yet have a facility, that's what we're trying to accomplish here.
The staff report simply says that there's an oversaturation in the area. I think that's the reasoning for the denial. Maybe you could address that.
Well, I, I guess I'm, I'm curious, from a, from a cell tower standpoint, where co-location is encouraged, I guess I don't completely understand the concept of oversaturation, where you have cell towers all over town and buildings all over town with two, three, four, and five carriers occupying one facility. Okay, that's, that's where we're headed. We're, we always have that in mind, is to minimize the impact by maximizing the use of an existing structure or a proposed structure, make it co-locatable. This, this particular parcel is uniquely suited, because we did the parking analysis, and where eighty-six spots are required, this one has in excess of a hundred and twenty-one, which means to me, when I look at it, not only am I meeting setback to residential, not only am I surrounded by a two-story storage building to the east, a one-to-two-story office building to my north, the convenience store and no residential to the west...
What about the fire department that they referenced?
You know where it is? It's west on Smoke Ranch or a half mile.
Yeah, it's, it's west far enough that I didn't...
Go ask the chief, he'd love to have the income.
Why couldn't you put a flagpole at the fire department? Put it a hundred feet in the air?
Excellent, excellent question. The, the, the search ring that I had that the engineers are gonna allow me to work with didn't go that far. And, and that's the best answer I can give you. Understandably, they don't, you know, your, your really good opportunities don't fall oftentimes where the engineer says, I can justify to my bosses to spend the money here.
And just one final note, and again, it's not entirely, I'm not blaming you, but even on my little trip down here, three people almost hit me within the three miles from my home. And without fail, when I see people wandering in and out of lanes and they're, when, as soon as I get, without fail, they're on a cellphone or they're texting. Where did we get as a society that we think, where you're driving, where you've got basically a missile that you're piloting around the, the community, that we should be text messaging and yapping on the phone all the time? Does that mean that everybody's on the phone while they drive, and therefore, we need cell towers all over the valley? And when is the technology going to improve to the point where we don't need these poles all over our community? I'm, I'm always perplexed.
I can't speak with authority on the first issue, except to know that I understand, I can't speak with authority on your first question. It's a valid question, it's obviously...
Well, I think the reason we need so many of these cell towers is because everybody uses the phone everywhere, inappropriately. And again, that's not, that you have any control over, but perhaps at some point when we start saying no to cell towers everywhere, people will be a little less likely to talk twenty percent.
And I, and I believe I've made this case before, possibly before this body, but there, there is, there is a movement towards actually eliminating landline as a cost saving. So covering homes, I hear a whole lot more people saying, my phone works at my house, and they're tickled about it than the fact that my home doesn't work in my house like my house. So that, that is, a lot of people are looking to actually get rid of their landline and use only a cellphone so they don't have two bills. Certainly.
I was out there this morning, probably when you were there. And there's an eighteen feet phone. It had four bars sitting right where this thing's gonna go. It had plenty of coverage. Now, you explained to me why you needed seventy footer, where there's a flagpole right next to it, and there's four, four antenna on top of the building, fifty yards away. That's the oversaturation. I mean, there's, there's four antenna on the building and a pole, and you wanna put this mono pine in the middle of palm trees?
Well, the palm trees are on the west side of the...
No, look at your sim.
Right, that's what I'm saying, those palm trees are on...
It's nothing but palm trees, and you got a mono pine.
I understand, that was a directional shot, the palm trees are on the west side of the convenience store.
This will be the ugliest thing in that neighborhood, sitting in that parking lot.
You may wanna put it here, I, I've got no bars on mine.
I have no bars here. That's where you need to do it, right here.
The answer to your question, the answer to your question is, if you have four bars there, then the RF engineer's design is probably to offload traffic, because you have bars that might have a high-capacity area where they're dropping calls. That's the short answer to that question.
I'm not gonna support it, because this ugly thing, at seventy feet, when you don't need anything more than sixty, and I know better, because I've done a lot of them in Sun City, is just wrong.
I, I didn't get to that yet. After reading today, after reading staff report, I went back to the RF engineer and shared with him the, the position of staff, and I said, give me something, you have to help me get, give them something that they can at least help me compromise on. And his position was, if I can have two antennas per sector, they would do a palm tree in a Sunday second. I was doing the pine, the pine tree because it allows multiple carriers, multiple antennas, but a palm tree at six, if they can, if the tip of his antenna can be at sixty foot, okay, a palm tree they would love to do. And we would also be willing to plant additional live palms in other landscape beds as a buffer or along the street. So those were things that I was gonna bring to you as, as an option. I, I would love to do another canister like there now, but I can't get two antennas per sector inside that, because I'd have to have a big bulb on the top of the canister.
The way we've done it in Sun City is we put palm, mono palms in line with palm trees.
Certainly.
And it works perfect. This thing's sitting in the middle of a parking lot.
Well, the, the parking lot...
It's gonna be ugly.
Well, the, the parking lot is divided by three planters between the convenience store and the parking lot of the office building. And so one plant, one planter at the north is, is the slimline, we're in the next planter, and then there's a planter up against the street. So again, like I'm saying, if we can, we can, I put it there to gain separation from residential.
Are you saying you can put in real palm trees and blend this in as a palm tree?
No, he's, you can't, no. It's a, it's a parking lot. Well, it's a parking lot with planters, so there's planters along the front, and there's a planter heading north from the, from the front.
Yeah, but you can't put fifty-foot palm.
Fifty foot, no, I think we have twenty to thirty foot is, is fairly standard. It's very difficult to find the taller ones. So again, we're perfectly willing to add additional. I'm sorry?
Usually, the taller ones are the artificial ones in the parking lot.
That's correct. It's usually the tallest.
Seeing no more questions or comments on this, we'll entertain a motion on item thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. I'll make a motion on SUP three oh three four three, move for denial.
I will say, I'm in a, I'm gonna support the motion for denial, but I will say, of all the cellphone guys, you've certainly, you know, given us a, a good argument and seem reasonable to work with, and I wish you well in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor for denial. Your yes vote is to deny item thirty-eight. Post? And that has passed.
Thank you all for your time.
And that denial is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days to the office of the city clerk.
Thank you.
Item thirty-nine, SUP three zero five eight three, applicant owner Great Wash Park LLC for a proposed twelve thousand one hundred and ninety-five square foot supper club and a waiver to allow an approximate one hundred and forty-one foot distance separation from a park where four hundred feet is required at four four zero South Rampart Suite eighty-one twenty. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, as this is, as there is no direct access to the existing park from the subject site, staff can support the requested waiver. Staff finds the proposed supper club can be conducted and compatible in a harmonious manner as it will be located within a large mixed-use development. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of this application. Please note additional letters of protest and support have been received. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jay Brown, five twenty South Fourth Street, representing the applicant. The applicant owns the Queens Ridge Tivoli Village on Rampart and Alta, and although we're within property line, a property line, it's a hundred and forty-one feet, this, this supper club will face on Alta, so we're probably fifteen hundred feet away from the park, and we'd ask that you file the recommendation of staff.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wants to speak for or against item thirty-nine? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, if there's no discussion, I would make a motion.
Commissioner Evans?
Go ahead.
Okay, special use permit thirty-five eighty-three, make a recommendation for approval, Okay, special use permit thirty-five eighty-three, make a recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of thirty-nine, cast your vote.
Thank you, good evening.
And that goes forward to council December seventeenth.
Thanks for sticking with us this evening, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Item forty, SDR three zero five oh two, applicant owner Gregson Beltway Belt Castrol LLC for a four thousand three hundred and fifty square foot increase in warehouse and a three thousand square foot decrease of office to an approved sixty-three thousand two hundred and fifty square foot office and warehouse development on the west side of Rainbow Boulevard, approximately three hundred feet south of Red Coach Avenue. Staff?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm gonna stand on the side of your partner, my known property.
Thank you.
Uh, m- Mr. Chairman, uh, this, uh, major amendment eliminates, uh, previously, uh, the two parcels at forty-five oh five and forty-five fifteen Balsam Street, uh, and are no longer part of this application. Uh, the applicant is providing access only from Rainbow. Uh, previously, this item was approved, and it's very similar to the previous item, with a two, two point one percent increase in the, uh, amount of warehouse space. Staff finds, uh, that it can be conducted in a harmonious manner and recommends approval. Please note, we have received additional comments.
Thank you. Applicant?
Hi, Bill Roberts, three three nine Hollins Hall Street, Las Vegas, Nevada, here, repi, representing the owner-applicant. Uh, I wanna kinda take you back a little bit, just to kinda recap, um, and how we got here today.
Before you, before you go through all that, the staff's, I think, recommending approval, I wanna make sure you agree with their recommendation of approval and all their conditions?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, and again, I just wanna clarify for, for you council people here tonight, uh, again, how we got here, just for the record. Back in, uh, August of this year, August twentieth, uh, city council approved, and I'm sorry, I don't have a bigger copy of the original site plan, so I don't know if you wanna zoom in on this. This was the, uh, site plan that was previously approved, predicated on, um, the area between Rainbow West to Balsam, being approved as commercial business park, in conjunction with the two parcels here, uh, to the west, one three eight zero three six oh two zero zero seven and zero zero eight, uh, as M zoning from Balsam West to the ninety-five. Uh, and the reason this application was designed this way was, um, Scott Asjohn, um, who, uh, owns a asphalt company here, uh, needed to obtain access out to Rainbow to conduct his asphalt business, rather than going up Balsam to Red Coach into the residential corridor out to Rainbow. So, uh, we went to, at the time, we went to, uh, Scott Gregson, requesting access easement, which didn't really work for him and his partners. So, uh, Scott Asjohn, who owns these two parcels to the west, uh, went into escrow with Scott Gregson to purchase the five acres to create an all-inclusive commercial industrial park, uh, to eliminate any industrial traffic or, uh, you know, construction traffic going up to Red Coach into the residential neighborhood today. And so, that was all predicated on this plan. Uh, unfortunately, um, that transaction, uh, with Scott Asjohn purchasing the property from Scott Gregson did not occur, so therefore, Scott Gregson didn't wanna be legally bound to have, uh, Scott Asjohn taking his traffic through his property without not actually purchasing the property anymore. So, therefore, we came in with a new application, which is the site plan before you, uh, requesting to, uh, eliminate the original vacation of Balsam from here in this area right here, uh, and now putting Balsam back into play as it originally was, putting in, you know, he'll develop his half-street improvements as he'd be required to, uh, but basically, close it off and push all his traffic as required out onto Rainbow. Now, the buildings before you that you see here is a prototype of another roughly four and a half to five acre site that has been done over in the county, so we picked up that footprint and put it onto this site, um, and that's what's before you today. So, again, we have some smaller, uh, office warehouse buildings here with some larger ones. These here are, are loading docks, bays, so all the, the major truck traffic is along the, the commercial self-storage here on the south side. We did maintain the, the standard buffer, buffering that was originally approved, uh, contiguous to the church. Uh, there's also been approved for a two-story office building here, and we'll be putting our required landscaping along Balsam to buffer the residential to the west. Uh, it's been my understanding that staff will require, uh, the owner, uh, Scott Asjohn on these two parcels, come back in with a new site development review, how he works out his industrial access, truck traffic out to Rainbow. Scott Gregson is not opposed, is still working with him if he wants to try to come back, but, um, in the end, we're gonna move forward with this project, so. Therefore, we concur with staff's recommendation of approval.
This is a public hearing, anybody wanna speak for or against this item, please come forward.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, two forty north nineteenth street. If I remember right, there was a poor old boy that's been here, lived around this area for years and years, and he was just getting buried into this thing. I'd be interested to know if he's still alive, or if they just ran over him with a bulldozer.
Seeing nobody else, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Farlow, I don't think we can get an answer to that question for you, but I know he probably was noticed, if it was a concern, he'd probably be here. I think that's a gentleman that always had to get the sandbags out when it flooded.
Yeah, that's right. He's right down the other end, he's down the other end of the street.
Any more questions or comments from the board? If not, we'll entertain a motion on item forty.
I just wanna make sure, uh, Mr. Roberts, we are, we are reinstating Balsam, but having no access.
That is correct.
Okay.
And again, I just wanted to put that on the record, because.
Okay, 'cause I saw your letter, and I was confused for a second.
Motion, please.
Motion on number forty, SDR three oh five oh two, move for approval, subject to conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of item forty, please cast your vote. That motion has passed.
Thank you.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal with the city clerk's office within ten.
Thank you. That concludes the public hearing items, director business, item forty-one, TXT three zero seven seven eight, applicant owner, city of Las Vegas, discussion of possible action to amend the downtown centennial plan to add banquet facility, massage, accessory, and office other than listed to the permitted uses within the eighteen B arts district. Staff?
Um, Mr. Chairman, uh, this amendment does, uh, add office other than listed, it's currently not within the downtown centennial plan in that section, other offices are permitted, but not the general office, so we're correcting that. Uh, we're also, uh, this text amendment will add banquet facility and massages and accessory use to a primary use, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, anybody like to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board? Not, we'll entertain a motion on item forty-one.
I have a question, please.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes, the, the, uh, text amendment calls for the inclusion of massage, uh, does it say incidental or?
Accessory.
Accessory. Can someone explain that to me?
Uh, accessory massage requires, uh, that there be a primary use, uh, either a chiropractor, uh, a, a health kit, a health spa, gym, uh, as a primary use, and this is accessory, it has to be less than the primary use.
Hotel.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, and it's restricted to one hundred and fifty square feet of the overall site, or the overall floor plan.
Thank you.
I'll make a, a motion for approval.
One quick question, uh, just.
Commissioner Truesdale?
Because I, I did attend the, uh, arts district annual meeting several nights ago, and this, this item didn't come up, so I, I'm just curious what, what the directors involved in the arts district, um, is this something that they, they are concerned, 'cause these were, it, these items here were things that they were very vigorous, vigorously against when the arts district was incorporated.
And that was my next question, was did it go before the neighborhood association for a vote?
This has been brought forward at the request of the eighteen B arts district board.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any way we can open the public hearing?
Oh, sure, it's still early, no.
We will reopen the public hearing.
Just for a moment, um, just if I can comment to Commissioner.
Name and address for the record.
I'm sorry, Liz Sorokac, thirty-eight hundred Howard Hughes Parkway, um, here on behalf of a property owner that is actually in the arts district and intends to, um, utilize these uses with their proposed project that will be before you, so, in the next couple of months. Um, but if I can address Commissioner Truesdale's question, um, these items were taken before the arts district board, um, with respect to these particular uses, and the arts district board, um, found these particular uses to be acceptable and, um, didn't have an issue with them, if that helps you at all.
The arts district neighborhood board, or the eighteen B group, or?
The arts district board, um, which, uh, Jorgo from the city goes to those meetings also, and he was there, um.
Dick, Dick Guyer and those folks?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
No more questions or comment, entertain a motion, please.
I'll make that motion for approval of text, uh, three oh seven seven eight, with the all staff's recommendations.
Motion on the floor for approval of item forty-one, please cast your vote. That motion has passed.
Go forward to council in ordinance form.
Item forty-two, TXT three one one seven nine, applicant owner, city of Las Vegas, discussion of possible action to amend the town center development standards manual to update standards for the secondhand dealer use. Staff?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, this will expand the use, will expand the use to allow, uh, secondhand personal computers, laptop computers, and other similar electronic devices to be sold as non-consignment basis, and staff supports the, uh, requested amendment.
This is a public hearing, anybody in the audience wanna speak for or against this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions on the item forty-two or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for previous item forty-two.
Motion on the floor for approval of item forty-two, please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
It goes forward to council in ordinance form.
Next on the agenda is citizens' participation, item forty-three, citizens' participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Mr. Farlow?
Thank you, Todd Farlow, two forty north nineteenth street. I'm gonna go back to that cell tower before. Does anybody know who to contact with the school district? Do I contact Larry Mason, or do I contact Rufus?
Yeah.
I can't understand why in the world they're turning down bucks like that, when they're, at Centennial last night, they're saying they're just in absolute poverty, and they're gonna cut back on everything, and they're, and they're turning down money?
Todd Farlow, I think you should go, go speak at the school board. And make your suggestion at the school board, I really do.
May I be, thank you.